Good evening, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening. It is December thirteenth, 2022. At six thirty PM at this time, I will be calling to order our city council meeting. We will start with Pledge of Allegiance and invocation will be given by Second Ward Council Member Freddie Eastside Dancy.
At Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's on now. Okay, well, I just, you know, mind by your head. If you love to, if you don't, that's okay. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nature the bonds of community. In your name sake we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Dancy, and Madam Clerk, if you would, hit us with a roll call.
Mayor Mahoney?
Present.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Present.
Councilmember Dancy?
Eastside.
Councilmember Gunn?
Present.
Councilmember Schletty?
Westside.
Councilmember Benell?
Present.
Councilmember Forgrave?
Here.
All right, it's gonna be an east side, west side war happening in here. Thank you for the roll call. We are all present. Looking for a motion and support to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported in the discussion. Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, agenda passes. Brings us to number five, Presentations and Proclamations. Item A, we have a Presentations first by the Jackson Continuum of Care.
Thanks for giving us the time to speak this evening. My name is Steve Castle. So I work over at Jackson Interface Shelter, and I'm here on behalf of the Jackson Continuum of Care. So thank you guys so much for giving us the opportunity to share this evening. My hope tonight, first, is just to communicate appreciation. I know that time is precious, especially during meetings like this, and you guys are all busy people with families and a lot of community business to talk about. So it means a lot that you guys give us time to come and share about what's happening. I really hope to just create a better understanding of what the Jackson Continuum of Care does. So just kind of a quick, high-level overview. We're not gonna go into mountains of data. If there's stuff that, as, you know, through this presentation that comes to mind, then we'd love to have, you know, future dialogue to really go deeper into some of that data. But tonight, just really want a kind of high-level overview of what the Continuum of Care is. I really want to strengthen collaboration between the, the community, the county, the city, everybody, because we're all on the same team trying to meet the needs within our community. We have a solution for, that we would want to propose, just for some immediate needs here. In the winter, there's just more realities that come with those that are on the streets. And so we, as a Continuum of Care, discuss some ideas that we think could help in the immediate future, and then discuss some long-term things as well for ongoing partnership. So, in a nutshell, so Continuum of Care is a large body of groups that work together to address those that are struggling with homelessness and poverty. So Jackson's Continuum of Care, which represents our area, there's Continuum of Cares throughout Michigan, throughout the United States. So our community has one as well. And so there are thirty-one agencies specifically that work with our Continuum of Care. That's for-profit, nonprofit, street outreach with homelessness, and just a host of other things that, that directly work with those that are struggling here in Jackson. Really what they do, they serve as an advocate, both locally but also at the state level. They, there's HUD dollars, so Housing and Urban Development dollars that come to different communities. So the Continuum of Cares are the fiduciary that really, that kind of helps to decide where that funding goes, and it works collaboratively to decide where that goes based on the data, on the research, and the expertise of the different organizations that are working on it. So it's roughly one million plus that comes to Jackson through the Continuum of Care to be divvied out. And then that's just the specific HUD and MISTDA dollars that come through. With there being thirty-one-plus organizations, there's, you know, much more funding and personnel and things that, that go towards a lot of different specific things. But that's just those targeted dollars specifically. There's centralized intake. So a lot of what's important within this is, is working as a team to know that we're, if somebody's specifically connecting with, with this person, is this person being helped? Are they being documented that their, their issues are being addressed? So there's a centralized intake to make sure that's happening. So there's the HMIS system, which is Homelessness Management Information Systems, is the centralized intake that, that helps to make sure everybody's on the same page with the data and the statistics, that they're communicating well. So, so there's definitions for homelessness, and, and within the HUD and MISTDA dollars, those that are part of the Continuum of Care work under these definitions of homelessness. So it's really looking at individuals and families who lack fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So that's kind of broadly how that's defined. So a place not meant for human habitation, so nobody should be living in this abandoned garage or a, a house that's completely falling apart with no roof and things like that. So just, people should not be living in a certain place. Or if they're an emergency shelter or a hotel that's a temporary stay that maybe a charitable organization is, is paying for, that would be somebody that would be specifically homeless. And then it's broadened a little bit to individuals and families who are gonna be imminently homeless within the next couple of weeks. And then there's a few other definitions that go with that. But that's specifically the HUD definition that the Continuum of Care works with. And then the Jackson Point in Time Count. So throughout the whole United States, there's a point in time count where those that are homeless are identified, so that we can see trends throughout the whole United States. Is homelessness going up? Is it going down? And, and what are we seeing? And so Jackson takes part in that, just like all the other communities do. So at the bottom of the slide there are from twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. So in twenty-one, there were zero that were found on the street unsheltered, and then there were a hundred and nineteen that were in shelter, whether that's Interfaith or some of the other shelters, maybe in hotels that were provided and things like that, maybe at a ware shelter. And then this past year, twenty twenty-two, four were found on, sheltered on the streets, and then eighty-six were homeless that were sheltered. And for those that aren't familiar, so the, the point in time counted, I believe it's the fourth Wednesday or third Wednesday, it's always the very end of January each year. So it's a very, very cold night, and various organizations and volunteers come together about five or six in the morning, and then they fan out throughout the city. So each person gets a map of an area to go specifically to see if there's anybody that's, that's homeless and unsheltered on the streets. And so that's walking around parking lots, it's looking under bridges, it's going to playgrounds around Jackson, and just seeing if, if there's anybody or if there's signs of anybody that have been there. And so that's, that's how those numbers are identified for the point in time count. So this is just kind of a quick rundown. So as we're talking about the different things that the Continuum of Care looks at with homelessness, this slide just gives a quick rundown, okay, of, of some of the different things that people reach out to for assistance when they're, they're trying to connect with Continuum of Care members, or specifically the Housing Assistance Resource Agency, which Community Action Agency holds that for our community as part of the Continuum of Care. So I'm not gonna read through all of those, but people are reaching out for housing assistance. Some are reaching out because they are literally homeless, and it goes all the way down to someone that's exiting jail and has some other significant issues, struggling with cancer, has nowhere to go once they're out of jail. So those are the types of calls that different agencies are getting, that we're, we're working together to try to help those that are in need. So, so like I said, thirty-one organizations are part of it. I'm gonna give a quick example of a few of the organizations that are part of Continuum of Care, specifically those that are maybe working with those that are street homeless, or overseeing shelters, or some of the other specific needs that often people will associate with some of the critical homelessness needs. So Training and Treatment Innovation, so TTI is an organization that's part of the Continuum of Care, and they specifically work with street outreach. So if somebody's identified on the street, they will physically go to them and make sure they have the needs, their needs met, and say, is there assistance that you would want or need? Can I connect you with mental health services? Can I take you to the shelter and all those types of things? So that's what TTI does. For emergency shelter, Jackson Interface Shelter, we have usually between six and seven hundred people a year will physically sleep at Interface Shelter, and we probably average about sixty-five people on any given night staying at the shelter. MISTDA and Jackson Housing Commission specifically work with housing vouchers. So two hundred seventy-five-plus housing vouchers are going out for folks that, that need that assistance. There's the Public Housing Unit, which Jackson Housing Commission has, and they have subsidized congregate units. And then just overall general homelessness prevention and veteran housing, Community Action Agency does a lot to oversee those things. And then with homeless youth, DOCHUS is one of the main leaders in making sure that those issues are addressed. And though, so that's just a quick rundown of, of some of the different organizations and the different areas that they target. Within your packets, there's just some different data. So this is just a quick snapshot. So there's the Stella Report each year that, that really digs into this data. And so hopefully you guys got the packet, and if not, it should be emailed to you. That's the kind of much thicker, detailed information that I didn't want to go over tonight, because I know there's probably not time to do that. So this is just a quick snapshot of what, what some of that data looks like, where it's the number of households that were served. So like five hundred fifty-four, which represents seven hundred twelve total people. At the bottom, it so, it shows how many days homeless people had, how many, what percentage of those were exited, how many returned to homelessness, so recidivism rates and things like that. So those are kind of some of the stats and figures that we, we dig into each year based on the data. And then, yeah, this is, this is kind of another quick rundown that's looking at adults only, adult and children, children only. So we, we even kind of break it down with the families, with the individuals, with, with children, and, and make sure we're keeping track of that. So, so within that, you know, tonight, we wanted to, to share, kind of as a Continuum of Care, something that we would propose to meet some immediate needs right now. The reality is in Michigan, in, in northern states, the weather gets really cold. And so each year, there's, there's always kind of that struggle of, of with some that are in some pretty extreme situations, how do we best serve and help, help to make sure that, you know, nobody's literally dying on the street. And so, so, so those that are on shelter during the winter, it, it gets extra tricky, you know, if a shelter's at capacity, that's an, an issue. But also, if there's extreme mental health or safety concerns that some might be experiencing, sometimes it's tricky to figure out how to best serve that, that population. There are some that, whether it's because of mental health or, or other situations, choose to live outside, and maybe eight or nine months out of the year, that works out okay, but then it gets very dangerous during certain months of the year. So sometimes that gets tricky during the wintertime. And so, so something that's being looked at this year, which Continuum of Care is discussing, and that Segway is open to utilizing their facility as a space, is an emergency warming shelter during the winter months. So the thing that is great about this is some of those at-risk populations that I mentioned just above, this would really be something that would help all these categories of folks that sometimes can fall through the cracks during the winter months. Last year, we were blessed. So Jackson Interface Shelter partnered with Saint Paul's Episcopal Church and was able to offer a warming shelter throughout much of the winter. There were issues identified, a lot of it with, with some of the folks, again, mentioned above, with extreme mental health or other safety concerns, that unfortunately, even with having extra shelters like Saint Paul's as an emergency shelter, without the extreme mental health support, some of those folks still couldn't even be served in places like that. So we think that the solution at Segway, if properly facilitated, could actually address that gap. And then, within your packet, there is a sheet that talks about the data from last year's warming shelter. So it goes into more detail, but kind of the quick overview, there were ninety-one total individuals that were served throughout those three months at the warming center at Saint Paul's. And we averaged six people every night. The, the largest amount that was ever there was sixteen on one night, but on average, there were six there most evenings. And then, along with that, we would propose some funding for hotel dollars. And that's partly a, a short, a buffer for some of the different situations. Maybe if the shelter's at capacity, or for some reason, there ever, ever a time where if Segway was being run, if that was ever at capacity, that would give a little bit of a buffer until there's a chance to, to slide people into spots at Jackson Interface Shelter or other options. So that, that's an immediate thing that we would just like to propose, now that we're in the winter months. Long-term, we'd love to continually discuss winter plans, because I think a lot of times it's, winter comes up and people scramble and they say, what do we do? But we would love to just have a consistent plan that we know every year when, when this time of year comes, as a community, we're ready to address that need. And then, long-term, we'd love to continue to partner as much as possible with the city. And, and so we can keep looking at beyond just kind of immediate winter type of things, larger-scale things that, that just address a lot of the different needs that, that are being experienced by those struggling in Jackson. So I don't know if that would be a periodic brief presentations to city council, or if with the Affordable Housing Development Board that's been formed this last year or two, if there's more interaction that should happen with that, or if it's simply sharing data with you guys as you want it, you know. But, but whatever that looks like, we would love to make sure that we're sharing the information and partnering and, and working hand-in-hand with, with everybody. And then another thing I would just mention, a lot of times, a lot of this kind of work and, and interacting with some of these really difficult situations can be taxing. And I think sometimes those of us that partner, it's easy to almost sometimes get at each other, because I think there, there, there's different opinions on ways to do things. I think there's a lot of, you know, emotional toll that's, that's comes, comes to bear when you're interacting with really hard, sad situations. So I would just also say, I would love for us all to continually give each other the benefit of the doubt and, and give the assumption that we all really care about Jackson, we all really care about people, and, and, you know, always just, you know, try to come together to, to hear each other out and get different perspectives on how to do things. And/or maybe it means there's a role within the city, and somebody's appointed to be specifically a part of the Continuum of Care and be the person that relays information back and forth and, and gives feedback to Continuum of Care. Hey, here's something that the city would really like analyzed, or, you know, vice versa. Here's what the Continuum of Care is finding data-wise, and then that's brought here. So whatever that looks like, we're, we're open to any of that. I know some city council members are part of the Continuum of Care pretty consistently. So I think informally, that's, you know, happening where that, that information is happening, and I'd love seeing those partnerships grow. But if, if there's any more formalization that needs to happen, that's, you know, something we're always open to. So that is the overview of the Continuum of Care, and I don't know if I'm done, or if there's questions, or however you best want to do it.
Council, what questions? Council, what questions do we have?
I would like to know a little bit more about the one point, or the one million-plus in resources. Where are those, and what are we doing with those?
So I am the representative that drew the short straw that had to speak in front of all you. So thankfully, even some smarter people than me came up. So Toby, that oversees Community Action Agency is gonna give
Okay.
an update on that one.
Thank you.
Hi, Toby Berry for Community Action Agency. We get about eight hundred thousand dollars in through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Community Action Agency gets a large chunk of that, and it's for permanent supportive housing. So housing for families in which one person has a disability. We do rental assistance, so it's long-term, it's permanent. So for as long as people come in and they're eligible and want to participate, you know, those slots are available for them. They rent private rental units in the community, and we pay subsidized rent for them. With that, we also own, as whoever is doing rental inspections knows, we also own rental units at Community Action Agency for that purpose. So permanent supportive housing, which is housing people who have a disability based on the HUD rule. We also do rapid rehousing, which is more, it's, it's shorter term. So permanent housing obviously is permanent. Rapid rehousing is up to twenty-four months, I think, of rental assistance for people who are homeless. As Community Action Agency and the work that we do with HUD, our definition of homelessness is actually even a little more stringent than that one up there. There, they have to be, they have to be literally homeless, but they also have to have experienced homelessness for a certain period of time, and we have to verify that in order for them to be eligible for those services. We have funding for supportive services only, so that's more of a kind of dollars to help triage people. They're not to actually provide service, but like rental assistance service, but to help connect people to other services that are available, who might not be eligible for HUD services. And I think, so that's kind of the HUD money. TTI also gets a portion of that HUD money for permanent supportive housing. And then we also get Emergency Solutions Grant from MISTDA that comes through for, also for homeless prevention. So that's keeping people from being evicted, helping with rental assistance, those types of things. And then, again, rapid rehousing. So it's getting people into housing. Those dollars through the Emergency Solutions Grant meet those homelessness descriptions, but then they also have an income qualification requirement. So you have to be extremely low-income to be eligible for those services. So while we do have one-plus million dollars here, it's very much government-required funding for housing. There, it's a box that you have to fit in, in order to be eligible.
So the thirty or hundred, whatever number it is that's out there that's not housed, would they fit into any of those that, or any of that box?
Some of them may fit into that box if we have slots available. So that's the other thing. Because permanent housing is permanent, we have a limited amount of resources. We get funded every year, but we have to fund those people who are existing in housing. We don't often have open slots, because people can stay.
Would I be able to get more information?
Absolutely.
related to that?
Yeah, absolutely. I was gonna make a run for it.
I guess the annual point of time where it says four unsheltered and then eighty-six sheltered, does that include any of the people that we've been talking about for the last couple of months here, the thirty to hundred, or, yeah, people that are homeless?
That includes the people that we find on that particular day.
On that day?
It's that day.
It's a Wednesday, right?
It is a point in time.
Like the last Wednesday, maybe, of the month?
Yeah.
The training and treatment portion for street outreach, where can I get more information on that?
Shontae Patton?
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's it. I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the questions. And I do want to-
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to answer any question. But if you want to add to one of the questions that were asked, that's, that's perfect.
Yeah, I think in general, I, I wanna, so, so with it being so many different organizations, so there's, there's the pot of money that's specifically HUD that COC works with, but there's dozens of organizations within COC that do these different things. So in the same way that there's the Jackson Area Ministerials Association, oh, that might have dozens of churches working together, they might have kind of a thing that they, as a collaborative body, want to work on together. But then it's dozens of individual churches that have different gifts and passions and locales that they're working in. So it's, it's very much the same where, you know, so of that million dollars, maybe there's four hundred million dollars that's represented between Lifeways Community Mental Health and Community Action Agency, and all these organizations with hundreds of staff. And so, e- even if there's things that don't fit within that, there's a lot of creative things that can be done, or pots of money that are different, because if a nonprofit's getting unrestricted dollars and there's a need, those things could still be addressed. It's just maybe saying that specific pot that's directed from HUD maybe can't be what's used for it. So, so that's where I, I think even Continuum of Care, so many community partners, they don't see, here's our tiny little limit that, you know, it's a million bucks split between thirty-one organizations. It's, here's our big, big mission, and here's the body where we come together to try to make sure we're speaking the same language, working together. And there's things above and beyond what Toby's talking about that could be done based on different organizations' abilities.
So let's just do around Robin. I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to ask any questions about the presentation.
Can we get lists of the thirty-one-plus organizations?
Yep.
And then you mentioned homeless management information system. Is that, if I become homeless, is it one or two people that might be entering that into the system, or is that I can't see a sheet and she can enter it? Could be any one of those thirty-one?
Yeah, so there's, there's very, there's a certain amount of licenses, so there's different organizations that hold staff that, that enter HMIS data. And so there's several at Interface Shelter that, a lot of that comes from, because any person that comes into the shelter. And then there's a few other organizations that, that, that do that as well. And I believe Community Action Agency gives out the licenses, if I'm correct on that. Yep.
I think that's all I have.
I know one that I have is, is there a reason, or is there a reason why we only do the pit count annually versus like quarterly or anything like that? Why is it only annually?
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of the federal HUD guidelines. And so it's kind of like a school count day where they always just choose, here's one snapshot, and if everybody had the flu that day, it would stink.
Is that necessarily a requirement by HUD, or is that something that can be adjusted? Just 'cause I, I feel like, you know, when it says four unsheltered for twenty twenty-two with eighty-six sheltered, I mean, I've, I hear from people definitely numbers higher than four that are unsheltered.
Right.
So I feel like if we did this quarterly versus annually, that we might get more accurate data than just once a year.
Yeah, and that's stuff that we could decide locally, if we said we want to always do a snapshot to go above and beyond for Jackson. I think that, that kind of makes sense. Because there's even things with, with recidivism, the way that, you know, maybe HUD would define it. If you haven't been homeless in three hundred sixty-five days, now it's not recidivism, because now it's a new fiscal year. Where I would say, if thirty times in your life you've been homeless, even though it's always one, a year and one day apart, I would still say that's recidivism. So I think that's where you can go above and beyond that, even though their data specifically, you know, counts that. You know, there is, I mean, there are, there are pieces where doing it when it's really cold, not to say that it also shouldn't be snapped on other times, where you do identify those that absolutely have no place to go, that are in very, very dire straits, where when it's eighty out, you know, then there's more flexibility of, of some types of those things, of if you did have a place to go or not. But, but those are good questions. Yep.
He will. Eastside?
No question.
Angelita?
Yeah, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Definitely appreciate you coming to spend some time to break some of that data down from the Stella Report. So my first question would be, for, for the pit count, is that annual date selected by the state or federally, or is that just Jackson's date that we decide to pick?
Yeah, it's within a couple of days, right, or something?
Yeah, the federal government decides when we have to do it.
Okay. So you said that individuals are counted, and you look for signs of if someone is homeless, if there are signs that someone's homeless at a place, but there's not a person there, is that counted as a person?
No. No.
So a person has to be physically outside
In that, yeah.
on
Yeah.
one of the most coldest nights of the year
Right.
in order to be counted as unsheltered?
For, for the unsheltered, or in their car, is that right, I believe? Car, or in their car, that'd be unsheltered. Yep. Yep.
Okay. For the data that was presented, the system performance overview, I'm curious if, I, well, I guess, I'm, I'm assuming that these data points are related to each other, meaning like of the seven hundred and twelve people, thirty-five percent of that seven hundred and twelve people were exited from being homeless, and then there was only a six percent recidivism rate from that thirty-five percent?
Yes.
Okay. For the overnight warming shelter at Segway, in the point where you said ninety-one total individuals were served at an average of six per night? in the point where you said ninety-one total individuals were served at an average of six per night, is, is this a total count for the time span? Or is this an individual account as in it was ninety-one individuals that were served?
Ninety-one individuals served at some point throughout that three?
Ninety-one different individuals?
Correct.
So not the same person staying on a different night?
Yeah, so I think it said three hundred, three hundred sixty-five bed nights or something like that with ninety-one. So some folks maybe came back a bunch of times, but it was ninety-one unique people?
Okay.
At some point. Yep. Thanks for that.
Okay. You kinda said the same thing that I was thinking. I have it written down that I was gonna ask Jonathan. So this would really be a question for him, if there's a possibility. And I guess I'll start by some context. I know that there are some individuals who are on council, who attend some of the continuum of care meetings, whether it be for their personal interest or their job here as a council member or their job that they actually worked during the day. Regardless of which one, I know all of us on council all work a full-time job except for the recently retired. Right, but usually what happens is when you retire, you got more work to do than when you actually work. But either way, I would ask if there's a possibility for us to assign a staff person on behalf of the city and city council that could formally and officially report back to us on those continuum of care meetings?
There's not a possibility. It's a definite.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers all my questions. I would probably add just some context to the question that Vice Mayor had about TTI. I think probably a more appropriate person to ask about TTI would be the director, whose name's Sandy. Shontae works there, but I would direct that question to the director of TTI.
Yeah, and we actually, gentleman Dennis is here. He, I think it's his first city council meeting, so he is just very excited to be here. But he, he actually works with TTI as well. And so he directly kinda builds a relationship with folks that are struggling on the street. So he's done that a lot of years. He's a go-to resource for us. And then again, to, to your question, Karen, would there be in the snapshot with the count? They're continually, every day of the year going out. And so if we said in January, that, January, there's this many, and then we find there's twenty-eight people in mid-June, they're working with them. They're trying to get them resourced. So that's still happening regardless of what's found. You know, they don't say, hey, we found four people, so that's who we're gonna help, you know, for the next, you know, three hundred sixty-four days. That was, that's just the, for the federal funding, what they need. So that, that's all that is.
If I'm, if I'm in order, Mr. Mayor, how does an organization become a part of the continuum of care?
I think it's just open, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's basically open. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's open anywhere. There's pastors on it. There's, I mean, really anybody's welcome. Cause the whole idea is it's, it's the community coming together to solve issues. So it's not this insular body at all. And so that, that's partly what I wanted to, to clarify. It's a bunch of people doing their thing, but it's a chance once a month to get together for an hour and a half, go over stuff, and then make sure we got enough bodies to go out on the point in town, the point in time night and just, you know, work through issues that we have.
Which guys are voting members?
Yes.
So who's the, are there voting members versus?
You have to attend a certain number of meetings within a six-month period in order to be a voting member. Freddie can vote.
And Steve, what, what's the day that you guys, that COC meets every month?
Second? First Tuesday.
First Tuesday?
Yes.
When and where?
It's on Zoom now. It used to be a disability connection. Did you use disability?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ten o'clock?
Zoom, though.
Yes, on Zoom now, ten o'clock. Kate, Kate really gets going. It could go till noon, but I think it's scheduled for an hour and a half. So it just depends on, but if you have to hop off early, nobody will get mad at you.
Could you add all of them? I know you have me and Freddie and Delina, but I don't know who else is on it. Could you just automatically put them on your email?
Good idea.
Are there groups, there, it's, is everyone in the continuum of care doing a unique job or a unique offering? Or is there duplication of services and cannibalism of resources?
I would think it's pretty unique, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think?
Sorry, you gotta come to the podium, Toby. Come on down.
I thought I didn't wanna do this, Steve. So I think we work really hard, especially when we're looking at funding, to ensure that we are not duplicating services. That's, that's kind of the point. We wanna make sure that those are spread out as much as possible so that everybody is doing what they are best at, really.
Has the continuum of care ever sought out organizations to join them if they see a need or see someone working in that space? Is that something that happens?
Yeah, we have. We've looked at our, our membership. Things have really changed since COVID. But we've looked at our membership and identified kind of who, who else is out there doing things and might need to be asked them to come to the table. It's not always, people can't always make it for that meeting and sometimes. But we do invite whomever. We're really open.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm gonna sit down then.
We might need you back again. Council, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I think that is it unless you got any closing.
I think so. If, with, if, if you guys do decide that you'd be open to or interested in coming alongside with some of the funding for the kinda emergency thing within Segway this, this winter, we did do a breakdown that we would propose if you were interested in that. So we didn't wanna throw it out there right away in case you said nope. But we do have that if you guys were to request that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our next item, which is a presentation by Residents in Action.
I'm not gonna mess it up. I'm just gonna, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
It always works, trust me.
No, we're gonna do both. I'll mess it up, for sure. See, I don't even know where this is, so. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
I think I know most of you up here. My name is Tasha Carter. I am the co-founder and executive director for Residents in Action. I wanna thank Continuum of Care for their presentation today. It really provided an overview of the professional system side of things. And I, I sit on the board for Community Action Agency, so I, I know that, for example, CAA does really great work. I've witnessed them help people that I've referred or that others have referred. So they do do good work. I also think it's a segue to showcase the perspective of those who are actually living the reality of homelessness. So the perspective from the people, I, I think that is a, a missing link. And I think Residents in Action really fills that gap. People who are on Residents in Action are people who live in the community. The people that we help are the people that we've grown up with. Our family, loved ones, friends, neighbors. So it, it, there's a difference when you have those deep-rooted connections in the community. And I, I would even say a, a, a different level of passion because when we go home and often use this in, in, cause I, I like walk the fine line. I, I work on the professional side, but I'm very boots-on-the-ground in the community, not only with Residents in Action, but other community activities. And when I go home, I can't turn the light off. I can't turn that switch off because the people who call me after hours are the, the people that I mentioned. So it, it is a, a great segue. I do also want to thank City Council for giving us the opportunity to come present today so that we can share that lens on a project that we completed. So I have welcome, just to get, I threw everything plus the kitchen sink at you, and I know that you haven't reviewed it all, but if you have questions, not only me, there are representatives from RIA here, Selena Taylor, Davida Quinn, and Shannon Jackson, were lead, leads on the homelessness project. And Diane Washington, and you'll see a slide, even Toby is a, a member of Residents in Action. So just to give you some context, we will give a, a quick summary of RIA. We'll give a summary of our homelessness project. And then we'll also talk about how we can work together and then answer questions. And I'm driving two computers here, so please bear with me. All right. So historically, Jackson's statistics have been grim. Year over year, you've seen me at this podium, some of you, month after month, saying, hey, look at these statistics, look at these disparities. And in poverty, the rates of poverty, the rates of economics, our youth metrics and homelessness, they're, they're, they're grim. And we realize that leaders in Jackson have participated in collaboratives and talked about equity and actionable learning and authentic engagement. However, for years, the same mindsets are in place when it comes to application. And additionally, the same methods and the same people are in place to operationalize it all. So again, that missing link are not only the residents, but that, the voice or the perspective from the people who are actually living the life of homelessness. Are we asking them, what do you need? Instead of making top-down decisions on what we think they need. I don't wanna do that. I wanna slide down. COVID exacerbated statistics that were already present, right? Pre-COVID, we had bad statistics, after COVID, and really still during COVID, cause COVID is still real. Those statistics are still here. And how RIA came about was because of COVID. You know, everywhere else, COVID was ravaging black communities. And we didn't want that to happen here in Jackson. So, you know, a court of residents came together and was like, hey, what, what is this thing? Why is it important? Are, are there things that we can do to mitigate the spread? And some of our efforts, because of our efforts, we, we, the, Jackson, we did get infections. We still have infections. But if you look at all of the demographic areas around Jackson, Jackson did not experience the rate of death, the rate of infections that other areas did. And we truly believe that based on the data, you know, look, taking a three-month look back, things that residents did boots-on-the-ground to educate people helped because what was happening in other areas did not happen here. So with the focus on equity, Residents in Action, we're community influencers. We're committed to implementing strategies to address the concerns that are identified and prioritized by residents in the community. We're serving as change agency, agents. So we're getting boots on the ground, out on the street, helping people willing to answer that phone at two in the morning when all the other agencies are, are closed. So again, we can't turn that light switch off because we're helping our loved ones. We're system change advocates. So we, we may be considered disruptors, disruptors of status quo because we're challenging decision-making, mindsets, policies and processes that have always been in place. Cause guess what? Those policies and processes that are in place have gotten us the statistics that we have today. And until we do something differently, we're not gonna move that needle. We have to do something differently. And again, we are, you're gonna hear this over and over again. We truly believe that critical component is listening to the people who are experiencing the issue, working with the people with lived experience. And I don't mean just having them sat at the table. People can lead their own change. They have great ideas. They just don't have the funds and the resources to bring those ideas to life or to fruition. We just need to be resourced. So we're also capacity builders. So our conceptual framework, we organize people, we organize data, we organize funds. We organize the network and we leverage the skill sets amongst us. And we build our skill sets along the way. So, I'm gonna go to the next slide. So what we've done in the last two years, I, I think what we're witnessing in Jackson is a paradigm shift. Because guess what? I, I think for a full year, I came to City Council. I stood right here and by myself. And I was, you know, yeah, I, he caused me trouble now. Here comes trouble. But guess what? Now trouble is coming with other residents to support what we're saying. And again, we, we've actually created a community-based workforce to help, help pay people who are helping people on, on the street in addition to providing resources and funds to people. So this is a picture of the core people. Why aren't you going? Okay, the core people who have been in the group from the beginning, March twenty, even before like the professional, uh, uh, what was it called? The, what did Zoe mean? What was it called? Toby, the emergency, whatever it was called, the COVID relief?
Oh, J CAN.
Group, yeah, J CAN. And even before that, I mean, weeks before that, residents were mobilizing. This is a picture or a list of all of the projects that we have either been a part of, completed, or actively in process. We, I won't spend much time on this slide, but I wanted to share this list. Cause I, I'm excited about it. We've been able, residents have been able to bring in, rein in between one point five million and two million dollars on projects where the funds were directly reinvested back into the community for, as resources, support services and also to, we're, we're kinda knocking on, not trying to knock that poverty issue down twofold. We are paying people who were in poverty to help people in poverty. So we're, we're addressing poverty from both of those perspectives. I won't go through anymore of that. Okay. This is a specific example of two of the big projects that we did. One was the Babies, Baby Needs Project. We were able to work with Henry Ford Health Jackson and Partiality Girls to develop a procurement process through the health system. And Partiality Girls, they're, they're getting, so you guys remember when all of, when COVID first started, you go into the grocery store and all of the toilet paper was off of the shelves? Okay, well, the same thing was happening to families, poor families, who had WIC coupons. They'd go into the grocery store and the shelves are empty. Cause people who, who had the money were going in and buying up all of the, the baby formula. So they go to take their, if you don't know, your WIC card is, it, it has an expiration date. So if you don't use that WIC card by a certain date, it expires. Then guess, what are you gonna do then? If you already didn't have money, you get a WIC card, you go in to use your WIC card, the formula's gone. Your card's expired before you can get food for your baby. Like what do you do? Well, we were able to develop a community solution, resident-led community solution by working with the health system to create that procurement process. Also Rapid Response Initiative, that was the State Coronavirus Task Force. Because in black communities, there was, COVID was ravaging. We worked with the health system and we were able to get a three hundred thousand dollar grant. We were able to push Kinsa thermometers out. And I don't know if you, if you, any of you guys got one, but it kinda works like the weather channel. You take your temp and it tracks high. You take your temp and it tracks high elevations of temperature. And so, people were able to self-manage their own health during that time, in addition to pushing the education out. For that rapid response project, we also did our own community-based evaluation. We're lucky that we have some great people on our team who have some good skills. But this community-based evaluation kind of set the foundation for all of the projects that RIA. But we go through this algorithm of, okay, is this a project that we want to do? And we were able to develop these foundational principles for every project that we work on. Okay, so I already talked a little bit about our why. So, United Way, they kind of, they were aware of some of the other projects that we were successful with and they had access to some grant funds with Flagstar Bank. And they approached us and it, because of their mission, vision, and values aligned with ours and we were already out boots-on-the-ground helping homeless people anyway, we aligned with them to do this project. So, our why is we love the community and its people that we love. And that, one of the key things is the established trusted resources. And I did throw data in this presentation. So, you'll see some key differences between what CLC has gathered and what Residents in Action gathered in the six-week project that we worked on. And the who matters, it really does, especially when trust is involved. I'm not going to tell you that I'm living in my car with my four kids when it's 30 degrees out. I'm just not going to do that, because are you going to come get my kids now? But I'll call Selena or Davida and say, hey, can you put me up in a hotel for a couple of days? Or what resources do you have to help me? So, I don't, I don't have to go to the organizations and risk having my kids taken away. So, and we're not here to, again, we're not here to bash CLC, because we need their resources. We need to be able to continue to collect data and identify issues and do root cause analysis so that we can come to the organizations and the agencies to say, can you help us help people who are experiencing whatever issue it is? So, we're not here to bash them, but we are here to insert and nudge everybody at every level to make you understand that there is a missing piece here. And the missing piece needs to be funded and resourced so that we can help move these statistics and make more positive outcomes. Alright. So, this is the core team. So, we had a project lead, performance improvement advisor, admin and data support. So, Shannon for the report, putting all of the data together. And then Davida and Selena were the resident assessors who were boots-on-the-ground. Alright, so what was the project? What was the purpose? What was the focus population, the scope of work, and the timeline? So, the goal was really based on workers, the resident assessors authentically engaging the homeless population in Jackson. We provided basic needs, built trust, and we gathered some demographic information. We also identified system barriers to long-term stable housing. So, so we did, we funded, we resourced them, Selena and Davida specifically, so that they could go out and have resources. So, when a homeless person came and said, hey, I'm hungry, they were able to provide them with food. When it was cold outside and they needed a hotel stay, we, they were, they had funding to put them up in a hotel. Get them warm boots or gloves or whatever. With every war, if you, there's a different strategy, right? There's different methods. We're just going to say for a regular war, you have the ground, you have the army, right? You have the Navy, you have the Air Force, you have the submarines, you have the spies. You know, you plant people in certain places so you could get that intel, right? This is not something that's going to be resolved with one strategy or one method to address it. We have to use multiple methods. And that's kind of what we did with our smaller-scale project. So, the focus population was the homeless population, which did not necessarily meet or fit the HUD definition. And we think that's, that is another one of the reasons why we were able to connect with so many people is because we didn't have that stringent, we didn't operate from that definition. And, so let me go to the next slide. We use, one of the frameworks that we use is called Human Centered Design. There's four different phases. You gather information, you analyze that information to define what the issue is, you ideate, and then you prototype. We did a modified approach for this project, because we had, the homeless project was a phased approach. So, it wasn't the typical full-fledged human-centered design, but I just wanted to share that is a framework. There's a method to our madness, you guys. So, looking at this definition for HUD and the McKinney Vento, people who do not have anywhere livable to stay or reside in unstable or impermanent settings, and children who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So, again, for this project, we focused on the reality of what's actually happening in the community, not necessarily this definition. And as a result, in addition to the homeless definition, we were able to serve individuals who were on the fringe of eligibility and often missed due to the narrow eligibility criteria. And so, we found that many individuals are forced to reside with family and friends in unhealthy, unstable, unsafe, and even dangerous situations. And they may find themselves without a permanent shelter and safe home due to overcrowding violence or circumstance beyond their control. Okay, so looking at some of the data, well, this is the methodology. So, we collected data on 125 homeless adults between February 16th and May 25th. We created, or really Selena, Davida, and Shannon were the drivers for developing this robust demographic form that they used to collect the data. And then, we, I, no one was contacted, like, we didn't go to the shelters. We were boots-on-the-ground, we went to tent city, we went to, you know, places that we knew homeless people were. Or, you know, after a while of people hearing, oh, Davida and Selena are helping us. Go get you some gloves, girl, they started coming to us. So, RIA identified individuals who are displaced from stable housing. People were living in cars, people were couch surfing, and or they found, they were found in other locations on the street or other places. The data we collected was through observation and interaction. So, again, we didn't do the, the, the human, the complete human-centered design process, but through observation, we were able to collect data. And then everything was, remained anonymous, as far as the data report. So, just some of the data components. Gender, slightly more women were identified. Race, the data showed a relatively equal number of black and white homeless individuals, revealing a significant racial disparity since only 19.9% of the population in the city is black. As far as the family makeup, more than half of those who are homeless were families with children. Among those families, an alarming 44% had infants, and 46% of the families had toddlers. 55% had children in elementary school, and 20% middle school. And then 19% reported having children in high school. We found that 20% of the people that we connected with were employed, but still homeless. 9%, almost 10%, were veterans. And then, the living conditions, that most of the individuals didn't have a permanent residence, but were living with someone commonly referred to as couch surfing, that was about half of the people. 69 individuals were living with family and friends. And then a total of 28% lived in unsheltered areas. And then 14, 11% lived in their car. The strategy, again, we provided supplies, we filled system gaps due to lag time associated with bureaucratic processes. So, of the professional systems, we navigated system barriers by personally and compassionately assisting homeless people and made direct outreach to bridge and connect to services. Some women who were just afraid to go to DHHS, we were able to convince them to go to DHHS and apply for benefits. And then, transportation, we coordinated transportation for them. A lot of times outside of this community, Tobahto Creek or Lansing, because we didn't have spots here to place them. And then, the last, more than 22 types of services were provided. And I won't go through all of those, but clothing, hot food, all of that. Alright, so, what were some of the findings? RIA was able to interact and collect information from people who may not have otherwise shared their experience. And again, that goes back to the trust. Many people who would normally be classified as homeless don't view them as, view themselves as homeless. Actually, that was, I mean, we had some young kids, well, I want kids to me, but younger individuals. And just because they had ended up money to stay in a hotel, they didn't consider themselves homeless. And that was, that was like a light bulb for me, like, wow, okay. Many of the homeless are young families and babies, toddlers, preschool, kids in school. And these are families that, like, the subsidy housing or affordable housing should be able to help, but they were on the street. RIA identified delays to connect people to resources because of after-hours issues, so 5 o'clock. If anything happens between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM, they're just out of luck. And, or on the weekend. So, we were able to fill those gaps with this funding. And then, what did I put? There's funding available in the community to address homelessness through government institutions and agencies, but people are not getting help when they need it. Alright, so, one success story that we wanted to share, 78-year-old guy, man, I should say, had been living on the streets for more than 16 years. And being homeless was just the norm for him, a persistent norm. He didn't have a valid identification, he had a criminal history, and he had cycled through various professional systems. But he just, he was still homeless. So, we were able to put him up in emergency housing for three days. Got him hot food, gave him, or he was able to get clothing. And even though, it was just a little bit of reprieve, because after that three-day stay, he was back on the streets. But we continued to follow him and make sure that his paperwork was filled out. And within three months, he was able to secure permanent housing. So, if we didn't do anything else good, like, that's awesome, I think it's awesome. Alright, so, outcomes. So, we demonstrated that the RIA's resident-led model was an important part of the solution to eliminate homelessness. We provided immediate needs, we helped with permanent housing. The residents assessors learned important skills in qualitative data collection, which will help us continue to build our capacity as we take on more projects. And this project was a perfect example of how the various organizations, nonprofits, the city can work with the resident-led efforts. It's a perfect example of how we can collaborate together to progress the statistics, or improve the statistics. So, some of the points of discussion, so through conversations with homeless individuals, this is some of the stuff we identified as barriers. Systems need to listen to those who are experiencing the problems. So, are we asking, what do you need and, or, whoops, typo, sorry, who can we help? How can we help you secure stable housing? Unemployment was a barrier, inadequate homelessness definition. I don't know how we get around that. If, I mean, I know HUD money is HUD money, but have we, and I know this is a lot, like Toby's probably like, what? Have we asked HUD? Like, I don't know. Even if HUD is still stuck on that definition, we still need to address the gap somehow, some way, right? So, lack of safe and affordable housing, so we know that we have units. We have, we, y'all know I was up here for a whole year saying, hey, we are knocking all these houses down and we don't have a parallel strategy to build houses back up. We, this is a domino effect now, we have a shortage of units. And then, lack of state identification. People don't have identification, they can't even apply for benefits. So, what strategies are we implementing to help people get the paperwork that they need so they can apply? Criminal history, we know, whoops, we know that's an issue. And we have groups like Nation Outside that are working through that, and Decriminalization of Poverty that are working through that. So, are we partnering with those groups to help with those issues? Alright, almost done, y'all. So, more points of discussion, oh, sorry, I put that again. Did I hear it, system need to listen? Sorry. Those with lived experience need to lead change efforts based on their deep community relationships, know how and ability to get results done. So, we need to be resourced, y'all. Alright, so, RIA has committed to its focus on equity and addressing dismantling racism, as well as to address emerging needs in Jackson. We know that the city of Jackson has jumped on board with that. And a lot of the individual organizations, agencies, and nonprofits have also publicly said that. But now we need to put some, anywhere our mouth is, did I say that right? Yeah, okay. And then, RIA wants you to be successful, and we can help you be successful if you work with us. Alright, two more slides. So our question for you is how can partnerships with Residents in Action help your organizations, agencies be more accountable in your commitment to improve housing stability, address the root causes of homelessness and poverty, and community health in general, as well as advance equity? So that's everybody in the room, welcome to our individual organizations. How can we partner to, to change these statistics? Alright, questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, what questions do we have? Let's do the same thing and just go round robin. I will start with Laura.
I don't, I don't have anything. I think you answered everything.
Care?
I, I don't have anything either, but I do want to thank you for coming out. And I'm, I'm a data-driven person, so I love all the data that you provided. I think that this gives us a really good, comprehensive look at what the problem is. And hopefully, we'll be able to come up with some good solutions for you.
Counsel member Big Will.
Yeah, just piggybacking a little bit off of what C O C mentioned with expanding Segway and immediate money for hotel stays. Do you have any tangible solutions right now?
We, we have lots of solutions. I'm not prepared to discuss those today, but again, I will stress that to win any war, you need multiple strategies. So just putting money in the, so that's my understanding that you guys are looking at three different things. One is banking, or putting money in the bank for hotel stays. Another one is to maybe build the pallet housing. And then the third one is maybe purchasing TA Wilson. You need all of them. You really do, I mean, you, you need multiple strategies to address homelessness. You need to, you need to meet the, the basic needs. People need help, you have to have funds to help people. You need that emergency housing, whether it's hotel or somewhere else, you have to have that. And a longer-term strategy could be purchasing the TA. But you can't implement that project without the resident piece. You have, you need the, you need to be able to connect with the people with, that are living the homelessness as a reality. You need to be asking them, what do you need? What do you need? Not assuming what they need. And whatever wraparound services that are put into that facility needs to be based off of what they say they need. And you need trusted people in place to help bridge those gaps.
Can I ask another question before?
Of course you can.
So you're mentioning asking, you know, asking those who are experiencing homelessness what they need. Are you, I'm assuming you're asking them what they need. So do you have any additional, I know, and I know Will's already mentioned this, but do you have any better ideas than what we've already been presented? Or, and if, if you don't have those answers, is that something that you can give to us at a later time?
I, I would say let's talk offline. We, we have, residents have tons of ideas, y'all.
Yeah.
They, I mean, they're the ones who have lived, they're living it so that they, they know what they need.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, excellent presentation. I know I've been kind of in and out in the beginning there. Mainly, mainly out for the last year and a half, it's been personal. But it's a great program. My, you know, thoughts in wanting to get a little more engaged. It's gonna be something that I'm really interested in. Getting to know what the people want. I know we've come up with some ideas along the way here, and none of them are perfect. But I know we have some need immediately. Certainly would be glad to hear what you've heard from those individuals that are in need. So I'm gonna step up some to these, both, both presentations were great. And, you know, created other thoughts. But I would like to know what you have on the table or what you know from the people that you've had experience with to see how, you know, the city may be able to move forward. You know, I'm one vote, but, you know, I do think you have the attention and the ears of the, the people here on this council today. Alright, so thank you.
He's side.
Thank you very much. My first question is about, you talked about hotels, you know, we talked about hotels, putting people in hotels. I guess what's the downside of the hotels, I guess, coming out of the hotels? Getting people out of the hotels? Is there a downside to that?
Well, I mean, I would say ideally, and Selena, Shannon, David, if y'all want to come up here and talk, that ideally, we, we need to place people in permanent housing. I mean, it's like a downfall when you put them up for three days or four days or whatever, and then they back on the streets. It does give them some reprieve during that time to, you know, try to relax, get a warm meal and get warm. But the long-term strategy is we, we need to build housing. We, we need housing, we're short units. So we, we need enough housing unit resources to just place people in homes.
You did, you did good, you did good.
Okay.
So our next question is, you talk about families, young families living in hotels, they don't consider themselves homeless. Do they have jobs?
Twenty percent of the, of the people that we connected with were employed.
And they're employed, just come back to housing, just hard to find housing for, for those who's home, who's displaced in that way. But they're working, but they just don't have anywhere to live.
Yeah, yeah. Or they, you know, they had a steady, like disability income, and they're just living in a hotel.
I guess my last one, you talked about homeless definition, and I know what HUD has and what the definition you talking about doing. For me, you know, I've been from financial stability, and I listen to a lot and I hear a lot. And it just seemed like, I don't know if that's the big elephant in the room or whatever, but it seemed like that's the biggest thing in the room that we hear about, the definition of homelessness. You know, some agencies use HUD, some don't use HUD. And just, just trying to figure out where do we go? If there's something we bring forward, how do you determine who's gonna be the one to determine? I guess we figure that out, what's homelessness, who's homeless, who's not homeless?
So I, if you're asking me my personal opinion, I mean, I know that organizations and agencies have to work within the scope of what the grant and those restrictions are, and they need their money to continue their operations. But we still, I mean, we still have to operate within the reality of what is actually going on. People who don't meet that definition are homeless. They on the street, they're in the cold, it's, it's cold outside. So in addition to, or and, we need to come up with strategies to get funding to support those pockets, that, that population that's ineligible.
Thank you very much.
Counsel member Gunn.
Yeah, no, I, you actually did, did answer some questions that I had. I was, when you were talking about social connections, I was trying to figure out, what does that mean? When it, like, where are you finding these people? How are you getting to them? But I think you answered that. But then when I'm looking at some of these tables too, it says, street, car, couch surfing. And then you've got shelter and aware shelter on there too. So I'm just trying to get a clear picture of how many people are unhoused. And I guess that would be the people that are on the street. So the eighty percent that are unemployed, are they, do they have any source of income? Are they on public benefits? I know you talked about this.
A lot of them did. I mean, a lot of them were disabled people who get their SSI check. And they're still, a lot of them have P E issues. Like, they get their money and they know where their money, I mean, where's their money going? So they don't have the funds to pay for rent, even if they found a housing unit to rent.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. And, and so were some of them also like on TANF and things like that too? Or do we know? I don't think for families.
Oh, like, you mean food stamps? Or, or food card, yeah, BBT.
BBT or TANF or any of those other?
Some were, well, some.
Because you're talking about families with small children typically. Okay, so some of them, public assistance, I think in public assistance. Because you were talking about families with small children, that's, that would be a source. So I'm just curious, that eighty percent, that's a lot of people with no, like, what? If they're not employed, what is their other means?
Do they want to be employed?
There are, so the numbers are. Sorry, Selena, can you come to the podium?
So, hi, everybody, my name's Selena. A lot of the numbers on that report are mixed. We did several different interviews from a whole lot of different people. And what we found the most is that many people were on food stamps. A lot of them did have jobs, minimum wage jobs, some lived in their cars. What we really saw was just a lack of housing, they just didn't have anywhere to live. Most of the returned citizens coming out of prison and stuff, a lot of them were not being truthful in areas that they should have been for being scared. So they were without identification, living where they shouldn't be living. Just a lot of that going on. There was, most of our numbers were from people that are basically living out there displaced. I'm staying with a friend, I live with my sister. We included them in the report because they didn't have an address to give us. And I was curious about their living situation. And when I was done hearing it, I felt like they were homeless. When you have three and four kids, you living with your sister or a friend, sleeping on the couch, you know, and you don't know when you're gonna find a place because of lack of money, lack of housing in the city. We, I had so many people that had money, y'all. They were begging me to help them to find housing, and I couldn't. These reports were just from ordinary people here in Jackson that were struggling. And, you know, I took some of the cases serious, I went hard on them. I couldn't get them all housed, but I ran into some cases where I took them real personal to heart, like family. And I didn't stop until I got them off the street. And that's exactly what I did. And some of them got permanent housing in our house now. I know the feeling of that, and we need it for everybody that's out there homeless. So, thanks, you did good, Tasha.
So if we had a hundred and twenty-five houses for people right now, would the homeless, would there be no homelessness?
Oh, I would, of course there would still be homelessness. We, we, in six weeks, we touched a hundred and twenty-five adults, and it represented almost three hundred people. So it would cover the people in our report within that six-week period.
Some of those are families too, right? I mean, so you're talking about adults with children.
The a hundred and twenty-five adults that represented two hundred and, no, the, the numbers outside of the one twenty-five were broken down for the, the kids.
The children, yeah, that's what I, yeah. So that's why I was trying to figure out that big total, which is closer to three hundred.
Yeah.
If that's also, like, they're under the guardianship of an adult. So it's a child, it's a family unit, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you both, Continuum of Care and Residents in Action for the, for the presentations. I think it gives council a, a great scope of, and a help to some of the decisions that we have to look to make. That brings us to item number six, public hearings. Looking for a motion to support to go into public hearing and approve a resolution for continuation of downtown social district.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in the discussion. Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, public hearing is now open. I don't have any slips from citizens who are interested in speaking during this public hearing, but I will do a one, two, three call. So this is first call for anyone interested in speaking on this public hearing on social districts. We still have public comment. This is not public comment, this is a public hearing on the continuation of the downtown social district. So going twice. Going, come on up, sorry. When you come up, just please provide us your name and address.
My name is Tom Kroger, I'm from 506 Union. I also own Crow's Nest Cafe out in Napoleon. Speaking on behalf of the, the community district, I think it would be a good, a good idea simply because of the fact that people are still afraid of eating in confined areas. If you're outside dining, if you're outside able to pass a beverage from place to place in a confined area, it promotes business. Business is obviously good for the community, and as a business owner, if that were available to us in our community as well, where, where we have our, our cafe, I would support it a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment on this particular subject, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John King, two zero three Third Street here in the city. It, it seems to me that this is more about alcohol than food. So I, I think it's worth, you know, having it, you know, maybe see how things go and then evaluate it maybe after a certain amount of time. And so that's sort of what my opinion would be, thank you.
Okay, council, any comments from you guys? Seeing or hearing none, we will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported in the discussion. Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. And now we are looking for a motion to support to approve the resolution to continue the downtown social district.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Just one question for clarification for staff. Those entities who are interested in continuing, will there be consideration for the fees that they previously paid?
Kind of vamp while the DDA director comes up, because I think he's got a good answer to that question.
Right on.
Good evening, council, thanks so much for that question. Yes, so the Downtown Development Authority has made a commitment this year to do two things with these. One, any of the bar and restaurants that want to participate in the social district, right now, we're gonna pay their fees for this first year. And we're also gonna pay back the fees for anybody who applied in the last cycle when the social district did not open. So that was five, I think, five license holders from last year. So we're gonna pay those fees for the last time, and we're gonna pay the fees for this time as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Are you getting more interest as a result of that?
Now, that's another question, he said any more questions.
I know, I know, I know.
I'm gonna have her come up here in a minute. She laughed.
She knew he was gonna do that.
No. We had hoped to have better than fifty percent, which would have been six license holders apply. We had eight apply in this cycle, so we're really happy. We did a variety of outreach that was different this time in some, some public meetings and an open house to help with applications. So to have eight on the docket for you tonight is pretty exciting for us. So, to have eight on the docket for you tonight is pretty exciting for us.
Good.
Right. Okay, uh, any additional questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. And we have a unanimous vote to, uh, have a social district. Looking forward to that next year. I think it's gonna be a great addition to downtown. Uh, at this time, we will now move to item number seven, uh, citizens' comment. Uh, before we get started, I just wanna make sure I read the rules for speaking before city council. Uh, rule number one, each speaker will state their name and address prior to addressing council. Rule number two, each speaker is limited to up to three minutes during the council, excuse me, during the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Council members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Number three, each speaker should be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance. While any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks at any member of the staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties, use obscene language while addressing the city council, or engage in disruptive or disorderly behavior during a council meeting. Number four, should any speaker cause a breach of the peace through their conduct, the mayor may declare a speaker out of order. Number five, if a speaker is declared out of order by the mayor and refuses to cease and desist from disruptive or disorderly conduct, the mayor may order the person removed from the meeting. Number six, each speaker may speak once under public comment and may not yield their time to others. Nathan Williams.
Hello, I'm Nathan Williams. I own, uh, two oh six Second Street, excuse me, um, and several other properties. I have several rental properties, and, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, a lot of the city employees may have seen me as an enemy, uh, because I've sued the city before, um, but that's not true. I'm just trying to make a living, uh, like everybody else. Uh, what I wanted to bring up was the, uh, cost of the rental inspection program and, uh, the fact that it's causing, um, myself and other organizations, including, the homeless shelters, unnecessary costs. I was looking up, uh, the Aware Shelter has a bill of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the city, um, for rental inspection. Um, and also, the Interface Shelter has a bill for nine hundred dollars. Those numbers are excessive for the, uh, the rental inspections. And there's several lawsuits that are, that are pending, um, that, you know, are gonna attempt to prove in court that the inspection fees are four times the amount of the actual cost. Also, the Administrative Hearings Bureau has been fining, attempting to fine, um, the, also, uh, the properties that are owned by the Interface Shelter. And I haven't looked into those properties, but I assume they are properties that they were using or potentially going to use for auxiliary, uh, you know, housing for people. And I know that several people that I know, um, have owned or own, uh, rooming houses where people can stay, um, you know, like roommate agreements, uh, but in more of a, more of a, uh, structured setting, like a room and boardhouses where the, the cost is considerably less than getting an entire apartment or house to yourself. I know that the city has been, just on the last update to the inspection program, has raised the fees for those houses. Even though they're houses with one kitchen, you know, if they have ten residents, they're charging, they're charging it as if it was five, uh, five units or more. And this also includes adult foster care homes, um, which a lot of people that are, have been homeless are, you know, are due to mental illness. Time's up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hot Rod? How about, you ready? Okay, I'm gonna say I can come back.
I've been homeless, I've been homeless about three years. Me and my dog, he's, we get to be together for night. He will go, he will freak out out, out on, and I had him since he was a baby. And I had a house, apartment, and they said, I wasn't there for inspection. I stayed there all day and all night, till thirty-three days later, my landlord kicked me out. For, I've been homeless for three years now, trying to get back on it. And I had my SSI, they took my SSI because I didn't have no, no address or nothing. So, I'm out, no money, nothing. Thanks for people taking care of me and my dog homeless. I sleep in a tent. And he's the only thing I got. My baby. Yeah, I was trying to get, trying to get a home for me and him. Uh, they, uh, they, I wrote, thought, uh, see, I can't read and write. Um, uh, I was in a crisis real bad. It's hard for me to remember what I, what I've been doing. Hmm, and all I know, I was just a home for me and him. That's all I can say.
Marcia?
My name's Marcia Long, and I'm sixty-five years old.
I'm sorry, come on down before you start speaking.
Mine's Marcia Long, sixty-five, and I live at Tent City. It's a beautiful place, but you can't see nothing at night, at night. You can't get around up there without flashlights. And some of us got one, some of us don't. Thank God, I'm with a bunch of people that share. I have a tent, thanks to my buddy back there helping me get one. And it's just poor lighting. I just can't believe I'm in this situation. But I'm finding out a lot about myself and the people around me. People that say that really your friends, where are they when you really need them? I got new people. They come up and say, hey, do you need something? Yeah, batteries, candles, flashlights, anything anybody can help us with. I mean, at least until we can get somewhere where we're warm. But we do the best we can to sustain one. The guy I call my dad, he set up a neat little thing. It, across between a wood bed and a cast bed. It keeps us warm. He let me stay in there a couple nights. If it wasn't for people like that, I don't know where I would be right now. I mean, my thumb, my fingers get froze right at the top, my toes and everything. But I don't complain. I'm a survivor, and I will always survive. But, I mean, it's getting tough. I mean, it's getting to the point where it's getting rough on me. If it wasn't for people like her caring and checking on me every day, I don't know where I would be. Cause I, I escaped for a couple days, cause it was getting nervous, actually. So, I just got up and walked off. She says, whatever you do, don't do that again. I says, well, that's, that's out of habit. But we do need help. We need a lot of help, and so far, a lot of us haven't turned anybody away. We welcome the help. We welcome the company. I mean, we met Indians, we met several different types of people since we've been out here. And I've even learned who I am. Some of you guys, I know, community, community should come out and check it out. We'd be more than welcome to show you around. There ain't much to show, but I, I would like you guys to come out and see what type of living and arrangements it is. It's good, but it's bad too.
Alice?
My name is Alice Cummings. I live at four nineteen West Hansen Street. I found out about Tent City. And we have five of them in Jackson. This is uncalled for. We lost five people that died because they were homeless. One person was on the ground, frozen to the ground because they were homeless. I was homeless. They did not get me any hope. I had to live with a friend that I'm still living with. I'm elderly myself. I'm disabled myself. I'm still living with them. I've had surgeries, and I had to even bring in my own daughter and grandchild because a landlord threw them out in the dead of winter. I called two-one-one the other day for them to get help, and they told me, we do not help out the city of Jackson. There is no help out there. I am very appalled that they will throw out a one-year-old child, trashed all their stuff, stole all their, their Christmas stuff. And the landlord laughed in their face. Something needs to change, and it can change with you. Have a heart. Change the city of Jackson. Please, mayor. I'm begging you. Change the state of Jackson. You can do it. You have the power. You have the heart. These people are dying. They have nothing without you. Thank you.
Kevin?
My name's Kevin Williams. I am currently residing at Tent City, down off the railroad tracks. You know, this is my first experience at forty-six years old at being homeless. And I'm, and I'm truly saddened with, with what I have experienced. You know, there's, uh, the lack of help, um, it's like with TJ. You know, she is the only one that comes down there on a daily basis to check in on us. You know, to bring us something to eat, to make sure that we have something to cover with, to stay warm. You know, she is the only one that comes down there and checks on us, you know, and that's ju- that's just sad. And the only reason that I'm homeless is because of my choices. You know, I had to go to several different states and, and, and pay my dues. And when I get back, you know, unbeknownst to me, the, the house that I was living in had burnt down. And the, and the landlord, instead of, um, having some sympathy and, and understanding, you know, he takes and has my truck towed to the impound lot, you know? So, I, I have lost everything. And it's like nobody seems to care to even, even try to help me get back on my feet, you know? Unless, like, you know, you gotta have an ID, or, uh, it's got a valid ID. You gotta have a social security card. You gotta have a birth certificate. Um, and when you do get all that, you get put on this waiting list. In the meantime, you know, it's, it's thirty degrees outside, and it's looking to get thirty below, you know, here in the next couple of weeks. And all I ask is, uh, you know, if, if there's a way to step it up and, and, and help us a little more than what there is, cause like I said, there's only one individual that's helping us. And, and that's TJ. That's all I got to say, man.
Brian?
Brian Lemay, nine thirty-four Russell Street. Thank you for having us. Thank you for hearing us. Um, heard a lot tonight. A lot of words, a lot of wise words, a lot of statistics, a lot of stats, some questions. Kind of ignorant questions, in my opinion, no offense. But it just goes to show you that you don't know, and I've been there, and I've been down that road. Don't expect everybody to understand those roads. Those roads are hard. Not everybody's meant to walk them. What I do want you to understand is without trying to find negative words in my vocabulary, action should be immediate for these problems. These problems that we're all facing. I mean, it's your community members, your brothers, your sisters, your uncles, your cousins, your nephews, people that you've worked with, people that you forgot about, people you went to school with, people that at one time maybe served you in this community, or served in this community in some form or capacity, and we seem to forget them. And it's just disheartening, it really is. Cause this should be a tribe. It's America. You're Americans. We're Americans. We should act like it. We should help every one of us when we're down. That's what this country stands for. It's what it was built on. And that's what it's, what it should always be and should stand for. And that starts right here at a local level, you know? Starts right here at the bottom, so that we can be the example that helps the government that seems to, in my opinion, we all know, seems to be clueless in a lot of things, and needs folks like y'all to show them what's being done and how it can be done, how that change can be effective right here, right now. And the fact that that lady, ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, terrible with them, had really good ideas about getting everybody together, people that are homeless, people that ain't homeless, people that hear can affect change, that understand where the money's gonna come from to maybe make some of these programs and possibilities happen. And that's what we're asking, you know? We just want y'all to, to look inside your hearts, you know? Christmas is here. Maybe watch the Scrooge story a couple times. I did. The Georgie Scott version's my favorite, cause it really just brings home the whole, what of a dirtbag he was, you know, old Scrooge, and how hard his heart was, and how he's forgotten about his fellow man, even the men he worked with, men that he'd lost in the past that he worked with. How he had a man that he worked for or worked for him, and his children were suffering, and he acted like he didn't even give a damn. I don't wanna be one of those men. I'm sure you don't either, and I'm sure you ladies and gentlemen up on that stand know what I'm talking about. And I ask that you dig deep in your heart, in your hearts of hearts, and know that some people ain't never gonna have the money to take care of themselves. But that's what a tribe does, we take care of our home when they fall. And for fairer than any picture painted with thought, it's the future that can be claimed with will. I'll leave that with y'all. Have a Merry Christmas. Thank you for your time.
Uh, Tom Crow Gary?
Good evening. I'm Tom Crow Gary of five oh six Union Street, um, formerly of the sixth ward, now of the fifth. We have an issue, we have an issue in our neighborhood that needs to be addressed as soon as possible, please. That is the continued, uh, break-ins, robberies, um, um, I just had a brain fart, sorry. There are, uh, there are a lot of issues that are, are facing our, our neighborhood in the, um, Flatiron District, especially around the McBride and Union Street areas between Fourth and First Street. There are a lot of robberies that are giving, um, a very bad image of, of the neighborhood. And a lot of, a lot of the, a lot of our neighbors are really talking about leaving the city because of the inaction. I work six days a week. I'm gone from four-thirty in the morning and sometimes until seven or eight o'clock at night. And I'm, I'm hit with a barrage of complaints from my neighbors stating that so-and-so's housing. house was broken into. Two coincidentally on the street next to me on 2nd Street, one neighboring my driveway, which we caught video of two individuals hopping over the fence. That's just unacceptable. The reason for that is the house is vacant. It was red-tagged as unlivable as there was a resident that was nearly 100-years-old that could not climb the stairs. And she, you know, she was sent to a home. So the house was vacant. It was robbed three times in, what, two weeks? Multiple robberies in daylight on McBride, multiple vehicles broken into on 3rd Street at 5:00 in the morning. People are getting scared. People are getting confused as to what the inaction is and why it's not being resolved. Please, don't make us move out of Jackson. I love Jackson. I moved here in 2017. I heard a lot of crap about Jackson, coming from California of all places. And I decided, nope, we're going to give it a chance. My husband's from here. I'm not. I believe in Jackson. He not so much. Our restaurant is out of the city limits. And the way things are going, we would never even consider relocating to the city of Jackson. I plead with you, Mr. Mayor, make a change. Thank you.
John C. King?
John King, 203 3rd Street here in the city. Yes, maybe I'll have to play the part of the Scrooge. I've sent letters to you. Sure, it's good for you to find ways, I suggested, maybe if there's someone in the city who could be a liaison to help people, you know, maybe the homeless or whatever, to find help. But that's, you know, by statute, you know, the city council here is, you know, it's not your job to be trying to find people homes and all that stuff. There's other areas of government. You can play a part in that. You know, there was the suggestion, like, you know, as I mentioned, TJ, you know, the person without clothes that froze to death. Well, I'm not sure if that's what the autopsy said. And the point is, where I was wondering, well, why is the person without clothes? You know, just because you're homeless doesn't mean you're without clothes. Was it a drug issue, a mental illness issue, or exactly what? There's a lot of reasons why maybe people might be homeless. But, you know, as I suggested, as experts have, like Michael Schellenberger, most have, you know, either mental illness issues or drug addiction issues. So to suggest that, oh, maybe just spend a lot of money, you know, that's going to help the homeless and, you know, if they get four walls around them and a roof over their head that, you know, all their problems are going to be solved. That's not the case. The residents in action, I mean, there was the long presentation there. They didn't significantly, Jackson didn't have any significantly better results, you know, with COVID than, you know, other areas. You know, they're not like full-time workers that, you know, specialize in homeless or anything like that. But yet, you know, I guess they want, maybe with the ARPA funds, to, you know, give them a bunch of those funds. I was in the, you know, the organization that, you know, eventually became residents in action. And so I know the people. There's still issues there. That's not their bellywood, the, you know, dealing with the homeless and all that. They're not a well-run, oiled organization. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Harry Gant?
My name's Harry Gant. Stayed at 406 West Washington. I was here once before speaking about violence in the neighborhood, had my house shot up. But first, let me think, because I'm part of that program too. I was homeless and I stayed at the shelter. I'm a veteran, so it's a veteran slash year program. And they set me and my son up and it's good what they're doing. And Eric Rice got a job and taking a whole bunch of people from the shelter, back and forth in a van, which they provided. So whatever they doing there is very good. But I'm here because you had a police officer lie on my son. And once that lie took place, a couple of his buddies followed up, writing my son up tickets. We went down, made a complaint. And they're supposed to be investigating to see if there's more people out here in the community that he lied on. But instead of investigating yourselves, we need another panel to come in here and investigate this matter. Because I sit there and watch the whole thing go down. I used to bring you video clips, Chief, of what was going on in my neighborhood, the shootings, the drug dealings. Now I got videos of officers stalking my son. Yep, parked across the street. And I use a bushnell where I can pull up real close. And that's how I got the other videos of when all that shooting stuff was going on. So I'm just here, there needs to be a deeper investigation. And I don't mean investigating yourselves.
Davida Quinn?
My name is Davida Quinn. I heard a whole lot tonight. So in your city, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Green, you got homeless people living in Tent City. Cynthia dead. On the ground. Foes to death. You got citizens saying that crime is terrible in their neighborhood. People are scared in their homes. You got a gentleman just saying that police is stalking his child. We got so much going on in our city. So much going on in our city. Something has to give. Something has to give here. You've heard several people talk tonight about all of the work. I'm involved in all of that work. After I gave this city of Jackson nine years of my life being the chemist in this city, which you didn't appreciate then, you don't appreciate now. You don't care if you cared. Some of the stuff that has went on since I've been in this little city for the last 13 years would not have went down the way it went down. Tearing down all the houses the last 13, just travesty. Some call the whore. You go home to your, I go home to my bed half the time. I work 24 hours a day. Mr. Davida, Mr. Davida, Mr. Davida. TJ, we're calling, everybody calling. We need some help. I got a mother and some children living in a car. I got a, and a 122 of America's best with its legs cut off, with no food, no place to go. I got a young man, 27-years-old, kicked out the shelter, has nowhere to go. Tonight is his last night that I could put him up at a hotel with COVID. He has nowhere to go tomorrow morning because Steve kicked him out of the shelter. I have women who would love to go to their where shelter, but there's no room at the shelter.
Thank you, Mr. Davida.
Do something. I'm not going to go away.
Do believe that completes our citizen comments, brings us to item number eight, petitions and communication from city staff and other governmental entities to be accepted and placed on file. We have none. And at this time, brings us to item number nine, we'll be looking for a motion to support to approve our consent calendar.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, that brings us to new business, looking for a motion to support. We have no other business. Brings us to new business. Item A, contract renewal for traffic signal work, looking for a motion and support for the approval of a contract renewal with our, excuse me, Jay Rennick Electric Incorporated for traffic signal work.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask, and I don't remember, I think that came from Jonathan, the question on the after-hours, they have a fee? I mean, do they get that fee if they're not doing anything? It's only if they have to come?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that was it.
Any other questions? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, that brings us to item B, looking for a motion to support for local government unit approval for the social district permits.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Just one question for staff, if additional businesses find that they are interested in joining after this approval, is there a process that they could then also apply and be approved? I just wanted to clarify.
Thanks so much for that question. Yes, applicants are invited and can apply at any time that they wish. Those would be put on council agenda at that time and brought before you. And then if you approve, they would go up to the state level for final certification much like this slate, so they can apply at any time.
Who is DL Watts Enterprise?
That is Dan Watts, who is the owner of Town Bar.
Oh.
Dan Watts, who is...
Can you put DBA Town Bar?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. Brings us down to item C, looking for a motion and support for the approval of deficient elimination plan resolution as of June 30, 2022 for special assessment capital project fund.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, passes. And that brings us to item D, looking for a motion and support for the approval of corrective action plan as of June 30, 2022 for actual expenditures exceeding the amounts authorized in the budget.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, Mr. Mayor, I just, can I have Heather come up and just explain this to me just a little bit? You do good. You okay. Just a little overview.
I'm sorry?
Just an overview.
You want an overview?
Yeah, just small, short, like 30 seconds.
In 30 seconds or less, all right. So as part of our audit, the auditors presented a schedule of budget variances where we were over. There were a couple that they indicated is over where we actually weren't. One was the fire truck purchase. So that's your overview.
Thank you very much. You know, I just wanted to congratulate you also for new position, Finance Department Director, you know, the first woman in the city to hold that position. So again, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have questions while in here?
I guess I do, just briefly. And I too want to congratulate you
Thank you.
on your recent promotion. But the safety measures that we have in place should kind of avoid this. I know some things were kind of right at the end of the year and it just fell into the overage or whatever that variance that we were working with. But do we have like, you know, safeties? I know you responded on many of those that, you know, we were going to be looking at that more. Do we have like a set procedure on how we will?
I don't know if it's actually set other than being more mindful
Yeah.
and departments watching their budgets more closely towards the end of the year and knowing what purchases are out there that still have to be paid for after the end.
After the end of the year, so, okay.
And if I could interject, Heather's approach to running the finance department is to view her department as a customer service department and work more closely with the different departments to figure out those projections. That's always kind of a hard thing to do, but she brings a lot of expertise in that. And I think it's going to work closer with our department heads and the finance people within the department and stuff.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I meant, you know?
Yep.
We got to balance and check there to kind of watch out for that
Yes.
future.
Okay.
And how long was Phil here?
Oh, my goodness, 35, 38 years.
Since you graduated from high school?
I think he was doing things on an abacus.
So will you be with us that long?
Um, no.
He was...
I got a later start than Phil did, so. Anybody else? Thank you. Help him out for DSC.
All right, seeing and hearing no further questions, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay. Brings us to item E, housing instability and homelessness. City manager, do you want to start us off?
I guess I can start us off. I, we had a couple of good presentations tonight. The residents in action, a little cagey about some ideas we could do, but that's okay. I think further discussion was part of both presentations. I would look to, I would look to the last, one of the last slides of the COC presentation where they gave us some immediate action ideas. And that's all I can start with, is just saying it'd be worthwhile for you guys to debate, consider whatever on those ones. We finally got to hear from people working in the space, so I think that's valuable. Now it's up to us and what we, which direction we want to go.
So I want to try to make sure that we do our comments in a more orderly fashion than we've done before. So I would like us to take this time to make one round of comments from everyone. Try your best to withhold any motions that you might have until we've all had a chance to comment. Second round, you can make whatever comment you want to make. If it includes a motion, so be it. And then we'll have a final round of comments also. So let's start with the West Side. That's what I'm calling from now on.
Yeah, West Side versus East Side. One thought I had was back in the day when I first started on council, we used to take this... One thought I had was back in the day when I first started on council, we used to take this, and I always get these letters mixed up, CBDG money, and put it out for kind of a call, call for action. How much money does this organization need or that organization need? And we stopped doing that and we, we, uh, focused the money towards, more towards housing. I think the first one that we focused on was actually the aware shelters renovations. Um, we helped with something there. I don't know exactly what. But could we do, could we do the same thing with, what do we have, $750,000 or roughly? Is that what we're dealing with?
Of the balance of the ARPA funds that we're talking about?
Yeah, the balance of the million that we had towards the five houses that we were gonna renovate. That's what this money is that we're talking about, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's a part of it.
Okay.
For sure.
So could we take, uh, that and say, okay, here's the bucket we have. I certainly don't have the answers to this. And every time I hear people talking about the needs of the homeless, um, it, I just get more confused as to what we as the city should actually physically be doing. And the last thing I want to do is spend money, $177,000 on TA Wilson and not know what to do with that building, or $428,000 on thirty pallets and have them sit there and maybe be used, not be used, or who's gonna run them, who's gonna clean them? Um, or give vouchers for hotel rooms if that's not what the people are asking for. I mean, if there are homeless people that need, have specific needs, those, that's what I kept hearing was let's address, try and address what the specific needs. But I'm convinced that each individual has a different need. And short of going out and building houses, which we can't do overnight, we could make it a long-term goal to work with a developer or something to do small houses or something. But for this immediate need, I would rather go to the people who are the experts and ask them to come and ask for dollars to help with whatever projects that they have and see the need. So that's my thought.
Sorry, I'm finishing some notes. Okay, council member Karen.
Uh, thank you. Um, kind of along the lines of, uh, what Councilmember Schlecty has mentioned, this, this is definitely not my wheelhouse. I do insurance for a living. So I, I don't understand the homeless problem nearly as well as those that work at COC and, and REAN, all, all of these other organizations that I know we've, um, heard from tonight. And I, I, I do agree with Councilmember Schlecty in terms of, I think their input is definitely important in, in considering matters like this, just because this isn't something that we work with every day, but they do. Um, I do know that we do need to decide something at least for the immediate future. I mean, it's, uh, thirty degrees outside right now. And, and I know it's getting colder, so I know that we do need to do something as soon as possible, at least to get some, get some kind of temporary solution. But I do know, I know what I've been hearing tonight is we need permanent housing, which I know is an huge struggle in Jackson anywhere. So I know that we need to start talking about some long-term goals, um, at least get something started, whether it's, you know, helping out with hotel rooms, warming shelters, things like that. And then coming up with a long-term plan, whether that's through the Affordable Housing Commission or, you know, through the Jackson Housing Commission, whoever handles something like that, I'm assuming it's affordable housing. And make sure that they still, because they're still gonna need funding to purchase these homes or, you know, get homes refurbished and things like that. Apparently Siri thinks I'm talking to her. Does this to me, it does this to me all the time. It did this to me in meetings like ten times the other day. But, but I, I know we need to come up with some kind of strategy in terms of our current immediate need versus our long-term need. And I know that, um, Steve did put together some great, um, ideas for the immediate needs and the long-term goals. So, um, I think that might be it for me. It's kind of vague, but.
Okay. Big Will.
Yeah, I tend to agree with, uh, everything that's everybody, everybody said so far, both on the presentations and on council. But I'd use to tell me more often than, you know, I guess care to admit that I was a day late and a dollar short in a lot of things. I feel like we're two years late and millions of dollars short on this. So I think we do need to do something immediately. I also think we need to reach out to these organizations, um, bring them to the table, talk with homeless people, find out the need and come up with a long-term plan as well. I don't think there is a silver bullet with the limited knowledge I do have with this. I don't, I, I think to, to Ms. Carter's point, she's right, there, there's no, there's no one thing we can do. Um, so I won't vote in favor of, of one silver bullet, but I'll vote for a lot of tiny regular bullets if anybody wants to throw motions out there.
A machine gun.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
Um, I'm pretty much in agreement with what has already been said. You know, um, as, as city government, we don't, I don't want to play, try to be an expert in anything. We definitely do need the, the two organizations and others that are out there, what thirty more organizations are all part of this. You know, we, we need to hear from you and we need to put our best foot forward, whatever we can, can do. So their input is valuable, and I said that once earlier, but I appreciate the information that was brought to us tonight. But I'm wanting, I'm wanting to get an understanding of, um, why s- some people aren't able to, or why they don't have income, or where their money is going. What, what are we doing with that? So there's, there's several areas that, you know, is just, just doesn't seem, um, I, I just can't get my mind wrapped around. And if you're receiving an income, you know, why aren't you able to use your money for housing? And then, you know, even down to why aren't landlords opening up? I thought I heard in, in these couple of months, we've been talking about this, that there were places open, there are apartments available or housing is available out there. So I'm, I'm just not quite getting, um, why. And, and I know, you know, I've had family that lived with me for years, off and on. I mean, not the same person, but they all kind of passed through. So I understand that piece, but they were able to move on. So, and I'm not saying that there are people out there that don't understand it or need more help or more guidance or services to get to that point. So, you know, finding how we can be a help to, uh, to, to people that are in that situation. And then, you know, coming up with something long-term, I, I don't know what the answer is, you know, I know we've talked TA Wilson, we've talked hotels, you know. Maybe a little bit of this and a little of that we'll have to do. And there is an immediate need right now as I had talked about before. There are people that don't have anywhere to go. They're in the cold, you know, and we've got these stations like, uh, Segway and other places that will, uh, give them some housing. And I know, um, it, it's, uh, has been brought up, you know, that King Center, I was trying to protect King Center. Well, I did, I wasn't eliminating the homeless. I want to get that message out there. I'm not saying that because King Center's been newly renovated, that we can't use that facility. I just didn't want to add to the building. That was my main thing. I don't want to add pods or whatever to the location, but I'm not, uh, denying people the use of that facility for warming, whether it's day or night. You know, and I don't have a right to make that decision anyway totally, you know, I'm, I'm sitting on council and have my, my vote. But it was something that I thought that we could, uh, do something, what we need to do right now for the next two or three months to get people some shelter, some place to be warm, some place to sleep other than outdoors. So, you know, I know there's an immediate need and I do want to, uh, get a little more involved with the two groups that were here today to just hear what's going on, um, in, in the city of Jackson. Cause, you know, I, I think I've even found where some people might be staying under trees and what have you around the shopping centers, you know. So it's like, that looks like somebody's actually been living there, you know, and I, it just caught my eye. But, you know, homeless has been a hot topic for the city, uh, of Jackson, uh, uh, council members. So, you know, I guess your eye is kind of more peeled than you notice things. So, um, I'm, I'm very open to learning what I don't know and, uh, encouraging and willing to work with council on coming up with what we can do now and what we can do in the future. I think that's it. No, I'm done. No. No, it's your turn.
East Side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, uh, after listening to, um, both presentations, it just made me realize, um, you know, I think in a sense we in a city staff, we in our heads. When we, um, did the allocation for funds, when we did the housing authority and we did the transition, uh, the main purpose of that money was for, um, to use, well, when, when my Dobbs did it, it wa- it was to give, mainly give to, um, organization that boots on the ground, doing things to help fund what they're doing. It wasn't to build houses, it wasn't to buy property, it wasn't doing things like that. And the more I listened and I, I believe that's what the money is there for, as far to, uh, we have a bucket of money and we should, the organizations, wh- when we decide, whomever it is, should be the one who access that money, have access to them, to, to those funds to do what they need to be done. Because, you know, TA Wilson, at the beginning, it sounded great and it probably do sound great for long-term. But for me, with TA Wilson, any other things we talking about, building is, um, who's gonna operate the, uh, who's gonna operate it? Who's gonna pay utilities? Who's gonna maintenance? Who's gonna secure, who's gonna do all that? Uh, city can't do that. I just don't see city staff doing that. But I do believe that, um, the funds that we have should be dedicated for the people who have boots on the ground. You know, I just heard so much residents in action, they, they gave a lot of information, a lot of numbers. Uh, COC gave a lot of numbers. I know I go to meetings, I listen to a lot of things, what they talking about. I hear a lot of acronyms. I still have no idea what they talking about. But, um, you know, um, it's been the same thing for years and since I've been on council. So yeah, um, that's, that's where I'm at. And like I said, the more I listen, the more I start sweating. And I'm like, man, this is just, it's, it's over my head. And personally, I just think we get the funds, we have a pocket of money. Let's get it to the people who needs it, who knows what to do with it, who knows how to operate it, who knows how to, to disperse it the way, the proper way it should be done. So that's how I feel about it. Um, that's all I have to say for now.
Councilmember Gunn.
Goodness. Okay, um, yeah, I think, you know, there's the, the short term. I feel like what's on our plate today is the short-term, how to provide a temporary solution for the people who are currently living on the street. I feel like that's the most pressing issue for us. And, um, we know there's a housing shortage. I mean, you know, working with people who are in transition, you know, we have people staying at, um, aware for longer than usual, because we can't find places for them to go either. So, um, I think what's, uh, Segway has offered, and I think that that's, um, like a low-hanging fruit of, for a solution. And I know that people are, um, that there had been problems with putting people up in hotels. But I think if, uh, looking at the immediacy of getting people out of living outdoors, we have to look at something short-term and immediate that we can implement. And I think that that's, um, being part of the COC now, put that hat on, that's part of what we, when we, um, talked about potential solutions, that it was looking at that being a priority. Obviously, housing, we have to look at that intermediate, long-term. That's not gonna happen overnight. And whether we do pallets, whether we do, um, tiny homes, whatever that is, that's not an overnight solution either. And all of it comes with infrastructure and support that's necessary, um, to support people with substance use disorders, with mental health issues, with, you know, all the myriad issues that, um, accompany some of the people that are chronically homeless especially. So, um, so I'm, I mean, I want to, I want us to look at short-term, immediate, what can we do to get people, um, who are currently living outdoors off the streets?
Okay. Um, thank you, council, uh, for this first round of comments. My, my first comment would be this, um. The first thing that I would say, um, is I smell smoke.
Yeah.
Literally.
Yeah.
Smell smoke. I don't know if you guys' noses is, uh, as acute to that as I am.
I smell it too.
But I know that smell. And it's the smell of somebody who has been sitting around an open fire. And I don't think any of the group that just recently left has attended a bonfire at somebody's home. That is the first comment that I would make. That we have a group of individuals who just came in and gave us their firsthand account. And before they said anything, I heard everything that I needed to hear through the aroma of smoke that entered the room when they entered the room. That's the first thing that I would say. In my opinion, sitting on this dais, being a public servant, um, it is our responsibility to know a little bit about a lot. So many different diverse issues, some we can't do absolutely nothing about, some have absolutely nothing to do with the job that we are here to do. But it is our job to know a little bit about a lot of different subjects. In my, in my previous job, they would, they would always say, we, we sold over two hundred different products. They would say, know enough to be dangerous. I was dangerous. In my opinion, this is not a either-or situation. This is not a situation where we have to make a choice on one of the solutions out of the group of solutions that we're looking at. To me, this is a yes-and situation where we actually need to be looking at all the solutions and how they could all help. We have an opportunity right now to be a catalyst for something new to happen in the community. I've said this several times, when the issue of homelessness has come up, that, uh, I do not believe that it is the sole responsibility or the design for local government to solve the issue of homelessness. Uh, I just stated earlier that every single one of us works a full-time job outside of our responsibility to serve here. So I think the public, as well as myself, as well as staff, are all well aware that we are not the experts. But I do think that we know enough, after several meetings and conversations about this, after two in-depth, uh, presentations and our own personal research, we know enough to make a sound decision. And I think that's what tonight's meeting really should be about. That's what we all should be thinking about and considering. And I think that's what tonight's meeting really should be about. That's what we all should be thinking about and considering right now. What is the best and the most sound decision that we can make? It does not have to be the perfect solution, but it has to be a sound decision based off the information that we've been given, the presentations that have been provided, and the firsthand accounts that have been provided. And we need to make a decision. We have, we had, this is, I believe, our fourth meeting discussing this topic. It's probably the seventh or eighth meeting where we've had people come in directly asking for council to take some action, to do something. And when I initially started the conversation with the city manager, my mind was mostly focused on what can we do to help the most emergent, immediate need that there is? What can we do to help? And that's how the pallet idea came about, through some conversations, somebody recommended it, I looked into it. Generally, the first person who I go to with an idea to say, hey, what do you think about this? Have you heard about this? Is Mr. Willis. I brought it to Mr. Willis and to my surprise, he said, look what's on my computer right now. And it was the same exact thing. Voted it around the community to people who are both boots on the ground and who work in some organizations. And got counsel from them as well. But then the further I thought about it, and I, I will be as transparent as possible and say, quite frankly, I was a little bit pissed off when the city manager brought more than one solution to the table. But that's his responsibility, is to bring solutions for us to evaluate, not just one person's idea, right? While I'm the mayor, what I understand is I literally only have one vote, right? My only other power is to run the meetings and make appointments, which then y'all still have to approve. And I can marry people. That was a surprise to me. But I think we have enough information to be able to make a sound decision. And I, I generally wouldn't throw my ideal out there first, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it. I know some other people have made some recommendations, but I, I don't wanna wait to the end and say, oh, well, think about this. What I ideally would like to see us consider is, like I said, not a, not an either-or, but a yes-and. I think that for our most immediate need, to get people housed as quickly as possible and get them off the street, I would like to see us implement a smaller fund to try to put people in hotels that are street homeless for, let's say, three to four weeks.
You have street homeless for three to four weeks, or you want them in a hotel for three to four weeks?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. What you, what you saying?
Put them in a hotel for three to four week, or they were street homeless for three to four weeks? Is there a qualifier and a...
People who are street homeless.
Like they can be homeless one day.
Okay.
No, what I'm saying is people who we know are street homeless, having an opportunity to be put in a hotel for three to four weeks, possibly. Hopefully, it doesn't take this long. Because the second suggestion that I would make is after hearing from several people, I think there's a lot of different numbers that we've heard. We've heard eight, we've heard 12, we've heard 30, we've heard 50 to 100. I think that the most accurate recent numbers that I've heard, I think that if we invested in, like between 10 to 15 pallet shelters, that would be an adequate a number of what I would call a short-long term. Because while we do need the infrastructure, I think that it is likely to be a lot simpler. It's, I think it can be simplified. That would give us some places to put people outside of a hotel. Because I think that's a short-lived and an easily taken advantage of option. And I still think that we should pursue the purchase of TA Wilson and work on a community-based strategy on what to do in that building. And the reason why I say do it in that order is because if we purchase the pallets and we continue to pursue TA Wilson, we can try to come up with an immediate, short-term lease agreement to put the pallets on that property with the intention to purchase for the long-term. That would give us showers, or not showers, but we even talked about some possibilities of how to make showers happen in that building. It would give us a place where those individuals could be fed. And then also a long-term goal of figuring out how that building could be utilized on a longer-term basis. That, that to me is the ideal answer. It's not a, it's not an either-or. It gives us something that's, that's, that's a right-now solution, something that addresses the immediate emergency need. And then also allows us as the city to make a long-term contribution to ending homelessness here in Jackson. So with that, we'll start second round of comments. And I'll, I'll go in reverse order. Councilmember Gunn.
So, just to be clear, I wasn't saying, you know, one or the other, that I was saying, for me, I felt like what we needed to solve tonight was the immediate, we wanna get people out of the cold. So, just to say, I wasn't disagreeing that any of the potential solutions that we've talked about in the last two weeks are not on the table. So, yeah, I mean, I, I would like to explore these options more. I think, again, with hotels, I know that people had concerns about that. And I think that one of the things that we might wanna consider if we're doing hotels is also some funds to support people, to work with the folks that are in hotels. Cause it may not necessarily be the folks that come to the continuum of care. I know when we have put people up in hotels at aware, it's a, it's a lot for us to be able to go to hotels on a regular basis, to be able to also provide the advocacy and the food and everything they need when they're there. And we've had to increase our staff capacity to do that. So, that would be one thing that I, that I would add to that. But, yeah, I think any of these are, are potential solutions. And again, my issue tonight is, short-term, what are we gonna do to get people out of the cold?
Yes, sir. Yeah, overnight warming, I know that came out of shelter, I think Segway. I think immediately that's what something we can fund and get people off the street in warming shelters for the night for very, very short-term. You know, when you go back to the hotels, just like Councilwoman Gunn said, the big, for me, the biggest thing's gonna be who's gonna do the service, who's gonna be out there to make sure, to provide service in, to the people who, who's in the, who's in hotels. That's one concern I have with that. But, you know, I know I brought up hotels at the last meeting. So, I'm not against that, I'm just, just concerned about, we just put them in hotels or what kind of service are gonna be offered? So, I, I, yeah, I guess, so, so if we do the hotels, I'm just, for three to four weeks, I guess that, that's gonna be my biggest concern. And also, we talking about the pallet shelters. So, are we looking at the company to come do the pallet shelters? Because I guess we know, I'm sure we can change our own, but building codes, it doesn't work in the state of Michigan. So I guess how would that, I'm trying to, how would that work? Who would be the ones to do that, to build them? So if we did it at TA Wilson, would we have quicker, faster access to electricity and things like that? Hook-up would be easier or faster?
In my brain, I mean, I'm not a construction person, but in my brain, you're right there, where everything's all built out. So it stands to reason that's correct, line of thought.
Okay. So with TA Wilson, are we, would we be looking to, say, we purchase that and hand it over to an organization so they can run it and do what needs to be done with that? And we just bag off? Or is something we gonna be dealing with?
I, I think that that can go a lot of different directions and it's so long-term that it provides us with an opportunity to figure out those questions. I don't think it's something anyone can answer tonight, but it's good to have a discussion on, but what that looks like because I don't think it'd be worthwhile for the city to, to hold that long-term. In my brain, it'd be nice to acquire it, help with the transition of the property to something that can be usable, build a coalition, build some collaboration, partnerships, and then talk about our exit strategy for something that fits with everybody.
So... And I'm sorry, just to add to that, my, my thought on that, I think that doing the combination of both really kind of allows us the opportunity to explore a pilot and what it would look like.
I would agree.
Okay, so, but with the warming shelters, so, an idea what the price tag would be? Well, how much we need to invest in that, if we're gonna do that immediately? Say, we make a motion tonight to do that, how long would that, how long would that take to go into effect? Couple days?
Are you talking about Segway?
Yeah, I'm talking about Segway, yeah, Segway. And we did the, for warming, overnight warm.
Pardon me? I just had a text about Segway, so I was...
Oh, okay. I'm just, you know, what would, what was the price range be? How much are we looking to fund with that? How soon could that go into effect?
I think it could go into effect as early as January. The continuum of care did put some cost estimates with, with respect to what it would take to operate long-term. Not long-term, but for the season. And a warming center operating between January and March, between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, having two people work there per shift, with a mental health professional on call every night, some renovations to the building, transportation costs to help get some people there to and from places, some random cleaning supplies, some food. And it'd be about $115,000. And that's, includes a generous donation from the interface shelter who'd be providing beds and cots. Or bedding and cots. Interface shelter.
Now, how many people would fit overnight?
They say 10, was it 10 or 15?
I thought they did 16.
10.
16?
One night, it sounded like it did 16. He said it averaged 6.
But I meant it's Segway. Was that at Segway?
So, I'm ready to answer your question.
Vice Mayor.
My first concern was the placing them in the hotels and then I don't know what the story is behind the issues that, that has been found with putting people into the hotel. I was just trying to figure out, how many homeless people are we talking about putting in the hotel? Is it the 10? Are we looking at more? Or are we, is this number that we're working with for hotels and this immediate for 10 people? Or are we looking at a much larger number?
I don't think anyone really knows, but again, with the continuous presentation and the recommendation, and they're happy to pass these out right now, I would say, Steve. They, they do have the cost estimates. And they were looking at possibly serving 23 households in their estimation. I don't know how they arrived at that number. But their cost estimates for doing something, January to March, 90 nights, 30 nights per household, so it definitely fits within the three to four weeks that, you know, the mayor's idea was. A full-time employee to help coordinate the hotel stays, that would be about an $81,000 in their estimation commitment. What's that? I have, at this point, not by meeting, I just made the agenda.
So, I'll wait to ask my question.
Okay, that...
Did that answer your question?
Kind of. The $81,000 would be for 30 nights.
For, for 23 households to stay 30 nights each. And then have a full-time employee coordinate all of that. So, it would, it would take the mayor's idea, so we wanna have someone who can stay longerish term, up to 30 nights. We can do that 23 times over.
How much was that?
Yeah, 23 houses.
Okay. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that, I guess, that would be able to be worked. But I am concerned with the pallets and the, the rules and the regs that go, or whatever I'm trying to say. The ordinances that, that we have in place that kind of limits that ability to do that. And then, of course, long-term would be TA Wilson. So, I'm kind of in agreement with what's already being said, you know, the hotels, if, if that pricing is good and Segway for maybe the overflow or maybe just splitting it halfway, doing a few at Segway and then, but then never require, require double assistance or whoever would come in and, and help us with that. Who coordinated for us. So I'm not much of an answer, but I, I think for immediate, I could, I'm okay with the hotel and the, or Segway.
Councilmember Will.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think the, the C O C recommendation that was just put before us covers the immediate need. It's got some numbers. I would, I would be in support of something like this. I think too, when we talked about the other two options, you know, we voted at the last meeting to look into purchasing the TA Wilson, so that ball's rolling. Maybe the manager can give us an update on that. I know it's only been a couple of weeks. But that's something I definitely wanna continue to pursue. The pallet shelters, I was, I've been flip-flopping on, but I've landed on being in support of them. I actually was in on a meeting this morning with some continuum of care members, some city officials, discussing some of the gaps that, just some of the gaps that homeless individuals fall through. And one that stuck out to me, it can be described this way, I think, I think some people, homeless individuals go to a shelter or a warming center and they get kicked out for various reasons, being intoxicated, being a threat to themselves or others. They get petitioned to go to a hospital, or they get petitioned to go to Henry Ford, get a psych evaluation. Henry Ford evaluates them and finds that they aren't a threat to others or themselves, and they're back out on the street. So, they're not able to have a permanent stay at the hospital on lockdown. They're not allowed to go to shelters or warming centers. And they're the ones that I think we often see on the street. Again, this is anecdotal and this is just one subset. But I think the pallet shelters that are built for one or two individuals help those people specifically and would fill that gap. help those people specifically and would fill that gap. So, kind of to echo what everybody said here, I, I support all of it. But that's the reason I support pallet shelters now, even if I didn't in the past.
House Member Karen.
Thank you. I'm kind of similarly going to echo what, obviously, what other members on council have said. I, I do really like this proposal that Steve brought from COC. I think this is a great idea for our short-term, immediate need. I also originally was kind of flip-flopping like Will on the pallet shelters, but I think, just from certain situations that he's even discussed that I've been hearing about, that I think that for certain individuals that can't be in a larger group setting, like a shelter or even the TA Wilson situation, people that need to be alone just due to certain mental health needs, I think that that's going to fill that gap. But then also the TA Wilson is going to fill a large gap. So, I, I like the idea of using the warming center, using hotels. I'm really glad that COC mentioned food in here, because I was going to say something about that. I'm thinking, they've got somewhere to stay, are they going to be able to eat? So, I'm really glad that that's mentioned in there. I know we talked about the pallet shelters in terms of codes. From my understanding, when pallet did the presentation, because it's not considered permanent housing, there are essentially loopholes that we can work around in terms of codes. So, I know we've also talked about whether that's, whether a pallet shelter community is considered a campground. So, I know that if we're gonna, if we're gonna move forward with pallets, we need to make sure that if we need to tweak an ordinance or write an ordinance, that we need to start moving on that ASAP, because if there's going to be any kind of blockage from us doing a pallet community, we need to start working on that pretty soon. And I know also the TA Wilson is in the works, and like Will said, I'm interested to see if there's been any progress on that. But yeah, that's.
Back to the West Side.
I like having the short-term. I, I, I like, I like the proposal because it's coming from the experts. Also, I guess I would have one question as to whether or not this meets the needs of Tasha's group, because she seems to be touching different people within our community. And if it doesn't, I would like to see maybe some dollars going to Tasha's group to help touch that. Not sure what that would look like. And then, I mean, I, I would be ready to vote on something like this and then keep pursuing your other suggestions as a holistic look at the problem.
Man, I wish we would have had these numbers during the presentations, because I would have some questions about the numbers in here, as far as like the, the breakdown of the cost.
Invite them up to the explain.
On behalf of me? I mean, sure, I guess.
I would like some answers too, so.
Sure.
Would you guys like to approach the bench?
Tag you with.
I was trying to avoid it, but my name's Laura Ream, I'm from Community Action Agency, and I created the budget.
Sorry, one more time, Laura?
Laura, my last name is Ream.
Nice to meet you, Laura. So, I don't know if anybody else on council has questions about the budget, because if something, I would like you guys to go first. You might ask the question that I'm asking.
I can, I can ask a question. So, looking at the temporary motels, I see, you know, the $22,000, $22,000 for the, you know, for the person who's going to work that, a full-time employee. But, um, so, living in a motel, what about food? How do, are we expecting them to buy their food? Or is that a stipend come from somewhere other, other, other location that's going to supply that?
That's a good question. We didn't put food in the motel piece. I think when we were thinking about motel, a lot of times, who we see in the motel are families, who also are connected to food assistance and have some options for purchasing some things that they could make in motel. We've also looked to some of our local food pantries to help fill those gaps. Not so much with like canned goods or things they'd have to cook, but other things that they could use at motel.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question. You just, you used the term motel. So, is this all a motel, like one unit or one facility?
Yeah, so, we've done motelling with several different, different places in the county and throughout Jackson. It's usually just who has availability and is willing to work with us. We try to, we put $85 in as kind of our cap there. That's what the state rate is right now for motelling. So, some motels want to charge much more than that, others will give us a lesser rate. So, it's just whoever will work with us. We've worked with Colonial Inn, we've worked with Travelodge, we've worked with America's Best Value Inn, we've worked with Hampton Inn, we've worked with lots of different places. So, it's who has availability, who has room for the size household we're working with.
Okay, so, the full-time coordinator would have to travel from one location to the other location to?
They could, yeah. So, we would try to contract with one hotel to put everybody in one space if we can. It just depends on who has availability though. So, they would go from place to place. What we've seen in the past doing motelling is that it's beneficial to have one person that's coordinating all the motel stays, so that they can end up in one place if possible, and that they're working with them on that housing stability piece to move from motel to permanent housing.
I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
So, my first question would be, so, with this, with this budget, this is, um, if we, if we chose to do 90 nights for 20 people? Or is it 10 people a night for? I guess I'm a little confused on, on that part.
On the motel part?
On the, on the, is this for 90 nights for the 23 people that was mentioned? Or is this?
So, it was estimated at 23 people each staying 30 nights across a 90-night stay. So, we would do it for those winter months, approximately 90 nights. Each household, we'd give approximately 30 days in motel to work towards that permanent housing solution.
What about the $27,000 for, in one on-call mental health professional? And who would be the organization?
So, we added the mental health professional, because what we found last year when we did the warming center piece, what the shelter had found was that a lot of times, we had people that had some behaviors that were related to mental health issues, and having a staff person that could deal with those, a lot of times would keep that person, allow that person to be able to stay the night at the warming center and not have to be displaced. And so, we thought it was important to add that, that cost in there. They don't necessarily have to be on-site all night, they could be on-call and come in as needed. But when we had talked to Life Race about it, they couldn't guarantee that one of their on-call people could always be available to the warming center. So, we added that in ourselves as an extra piece. And we don't have a, we're hoping that we use the cost of what that profession is, would have right now, and so we're hoping that we could contract with somebody that already has a staff person that would do that with us.
Okay, so that staff person isn't, this, so the $27,000 is not for the facilitation of the program, but for someone from the mental health field to be available for 10 hours a day at $30 an hour for 90 nights? Okay. I got more questions, but I think they probably would be better directed at whoever the mental health institution is or organization that would be providing that person, because at, at 10 hours a day, that doesn't cover the 24-hour period. And is that 10 hours like of a normal day? Or would this be at the most critical hours, like nighttime?
Yeah, so the 10 hours was for the time of the warm, that the warming center would be open at night, so.
Okay, so this is for the?
Yeah, not for the motting.
So, this is for a mix. This isn't for the, the, this isn't like, so, okay, I see. Never mind, I was a little confused, but I see now.
Connected to the warming center piece, yeah.
Is up here, the motel stay is, is below. Okay, I was a little confused on that at first.
I mean, you can put them in there for 24 hours if you want.
No, I was just a little confused. I was a little confused. With such short time to really kind of go over this, because it wasn't presented in the presentation, it was presented to us afterwards. I'm kind of reading it on the fly. So, I was just a little confused about, like, is this all one solution presented together? And the, okay, that, that answered that question for me. So, the one-time, full-time employee is estimated for, to manage the hotel stay is, is estimated to be $22,000. What, what's the details of that person? Is, so, full-time employee, I'm assuming 40 hours a week for that 90-day timeframe?
Right. With their focus being on the people that are at motel, coordinating those stays, making sure the financials are there, and then helping them with the housing stability piece.
That's, that's almost 30% of the budget. Okay. So, is that, is that $85 a night? Is that like a confirmed price? Is it, or is that an average?
It's an average. We would shoot for that amount or less if we could.
So, I, I guess for, for, for staff, how would, how would you see this being implemented? Would this be a situation where we allocate the money and then there's an organization that's responsible to produce some type of report at the end to let us know? Would it be managed along the way? Or dollars allocated upon the need when people have a need? How, how would staff see this being implemented?
Yeah, so, we can, with our, with our Forto Rescue Plan dollars, make an appropriation like this, and the continuum of care would be a sub-recipient. And they would be, we would, we would delineate what the goals, the objectives, what, what we would measure for success in the sub-recipient agreement, and then report on that. We could report every council meeting, because we would need to report that back to the feds anyway at the conclusion of this. So, we can give you, I think we could probably work with who was ever implementing this from the continuum care to give weekly updates. Here's who's being served right now, a snapshot every week, and to see where we are with funding levels and for need. Have we overshot, have we undershot? So, it's just a matter of us, us, us asking and clearly delineating what we want, what we expect, and having them report on that at any time period we need to have.
Okay, so just a, a separate, a separate question, and I don't know, I don't know whether to direct this staff, this question to, to staff or continuum of care representatives or a, a combination of both. But at the, the last discussion that we had on this, and, and the warming center at Segway became a part of the conversation and solution. When council asked, what action would we need to take as far as that particular recommendation or option? We were told at that time that there would be no action necessary on, on council for that solution to be explored. Does anybody else recall that? So, I guess my question would be, what brought about a financial request contribution for, for the city of Jackson to fund the Segway idea?
They, they took the ball and ran with it, that's how. Like, we, like, the discussions, the offline discuss, not offline, but the separate discussions that Chief Hit was coordinating was our own thing, and then they just took this ball and ran with it. Probably hearing from council and coming up with their own idea and just working in that space. So, that's best I can give you.
Okay, so, so was this something that was in, I guess I just, I didn't even answer if, if this was something that was in the works already? And now that they see that council is also working on it, they're asking for a financial contribution? Or if, if it was from them, like, watching the, the work that we were? I'm kind of confused on what the financial ask came from. This was our last meeting, when we specifically asked, like, what would be the contribution that council? Like, what action do we need to take? The, the reply was that council would need to take no action on that particular solution.
Definitely at the time, when we weren't, we, and we, we weren't at this level. We were, like I said, they took the ball and ran. We were still discussing, I think, Elmer, did you want to say something?
Well, just gonna point out, yeah, kind of where I was at coming to this meeting tonight, Mike Thompson, the COA from Segway, sitting in the audience. He was getting some costs on the remodel of the bathroom in that area. This proposal tonight is, is brand-new to me, and I was, I was kind of surprised, actually, when it got presented. So, yeah, my, my thought is, continuum of care brought the proposal tonight with these, with these costs that are in front of you.
But didn't we ask them?
No, I, that was the, the, when, the invitation that I sent out to the continuum of care, we just said, we want to know more about what you're doing and if and how we can support. What's going on?
And if and how you can support, isn't that what this is? This is if and this is how. So, they just put it in writing. I mean, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with what's in front of us, and I'm not sure why.
I'm just asking questions based off of the information that we were told, right? I mean, if you have other questions outside of what I'm asking about you, you're more than welcome to ask those questions. But the same, the same courtesy that I provide you to ask questions is the courtesy that I'm, I'm taking right now, is to ask questions.
Right, but I'm just saying, I thought we asked them, when we asked continuum of care to come up with some suggestions, because.
I definitely didn't ask for any, any monetary request. I just said, come talk to us about what's going on and, and then what you're doing and how you can be supported. I don't think there's, I know for sure in my conversations and email with the coordinator that didn't say, come with the budget.
Well, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put out there, as somebody who's on the continuum of care, somebody who runs a nonprofit organization, somebody who knows from the experience from the warming center last year, because we had that presentation, is that in our discussions, I said, you need to be honest at the council about what this entails. So, it's the what? What does it mean if we're going to do this? And that if we want to be successful, that it is going to have, it's going to have to be more structure, more infrastructure to be able to support something at this level. Whether we're talking about hotels and people that are supporting them, people are supporting the families that are in hotels. Like I said, when we put people up in hotels, I have to put more people on staff, more time on staff. So, my recommendation, when I was at the continuum of care having this discussion, is that we need to put it all out there.
And I don't have a problem, I mean, I feel more comfortable making a decision with this information. I think I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Mayor, where we were talking about Segway, and I think someone, it could have been you, said, what does it take to get the warming shelter up and running? And the comment was, it's, they've already said they're going to do it. Right. So, I get, I completely understand your question. I don't know if they're, the, I mean, well, let's ask. Are these numbers coming because you expect more people to show up as a result of the city relying on that warming shelter? Where'd the numbers come from? On the warm, on the warming?
Or are these realistic expectations? Or are these realistic expectations for Segway? Maybe they don't need this type of infrastructure. And at that point, we're not looking at the total, the total package. But I will say again that from, as a nonprofit, whenever we've put people up in hotels, we've had to double up staff during certain shifts.
And I, I think that's, that's understandable, Councilmember Gunn. Uh, but I, I think the, I don't know if you really understand the question that I'm asking, which is, from our understanding at the last meeting, this was a project, the Segway project was something that was already in the works.
Yep.
Right, so I guess the nuts and bolts of my question is, if the city should say, we're gonna go a different direction, we're not gonna vote on this at all, right? Or we're gonna wait, we're not gonna vote on this. My question would be, is the Segway project still going to take place? Because from our last understanding of what does council need to do in regards to the warming center at Segway?
Mm-hmm.
And the reply was, we need to do nothing. Now we have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar proposal in front of us, a meeting later. After a conversation with continuum of care and your understanding that there's, of course, additional expenses.
Right.
Right, and I, I get that, but I'm just trying to understand
Got it.
the intention behind the request.
I don't think I can answer that, but.
I don't know who wants to answer, whoever can answer at this point.
So I don't, I mean, who's here from Segway? Somebody said Mike was here from Segway, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Thompson, I'm the CEO at Segway, so thank you for the opportunity. So just to clarify, um, we had a meeting with Chief Hit and a number of other agencies a month or so ago. And we were talking about some various options. Segway has some space, I thought that that space would fit nicely in what we were talking about relative to a warming center. The space is available, there were a couple of, um, physical plant issues that need to be addressed. The biggest one is the bathroom. The space that I'm suggesting was previously a kindergarten classroom. And so the toilet is about this tall. And so, um, we brought in, um, Brian, I'm sorry, I don't.
Taylor.
Yeah, Brian Taylor, uh, to take a look at that space. And he had some recommendations which were forwarded to me, and we got some quotes for that. Um, the quote that we got for the bathroom, when I saw it, I told my facilities manager to call the company up, who will remain nameless, and say, either ask, is this a typo? Or did you misplace the decimal point? I thought it was huge. So I think we can do better on that, and we're gonna seek some other quotes as well. Other than that, the space is completely available. The budget that you're looking at, the larger numbers that you're looking at there are for the support systems in place. Segway isn't able to offer the staffing to do this exclusively. That would have to be something that would occur through the community, but Segway is able to offer the space. And so when you heard before that it was available and ready and you didn't need to take action, that was true outside of the physical plant, things that need to be taken care of to ensure that it met code for individuals who would be sleeping there throughout the night. Questions? Does that clarify things?
I do remember Jonathan talking about the tiny toilets.
The tiny toilets.
Um, well, Mike, thank you, I appreciate it, um, the explanation. And I definitely appreciate your willingness to offer the space. I guess the, the, the bottom question that I would have, I don't know if, if council has any additional questions. Uh, but my question would be, is this a project that you're seeking to pursue outside of the request here today? Is what my biggest question would be. Or is the expectation that we make a decision to fund this idea for Segway?
Let me clarify, this funding is not for Segway, so Segway won't see, see any of the funds for this relative to this.
Well, fund the proposal, I'll, I'll reword that question, to fund the proposal.
To fund the proposal, the proposal is for supports that a group of people felt was necessary to make this successful outside of the physical plant issues that need to be addressed, to use that space in that manner and that capacity. So yes, we are willing to be a part of that conversation. Uh, we're willing to do what we can to assist with that support, but we can't do that exclusively. We're a small nonprofit, we wouldn't have the capacity to be able to do that. To answer your question?
Indirectly. But I, what I'm hearing is, yes, the request is for council to fund the budget for this. I guess, I don't know if there's other, because there's, it sounds like there was a group of individuals who had this conversation about this idea, but the, the financial burden is being asked to come from city council? Or is this a group effort where other entities who are gonna support this idea are willing to come together on implementing this?
It is a group effort, yes. I can't speak to who has committed, um, outside of what Segway has committed at this point in time.
Is there someone from continuum of care that might be able to contribute to that answer from a group perspective?
Yeah, I'll, I'll sit on a couple things, so, one, with this proposal, it's ideally hitting some of the immediate issue, which is, there's a guy that, you know, died on the streets a few weeks ago. So, so it's really trying to address, this is happening, it's not even officially winter yet, and try to, to go after that situation. And then using what was learned from last year's warming shelter of, there's certain people that even, you could have thirty-five warming shelters, and if you don't have the correct supports in place, and some, uh, mental health professionals, there's a few people that still couldn't go to any of those places. So trying to address that, have a facility where Segway works perfectly because it's an exterior door, already has a bathroom. The update's done, because ideally if this works well, this becomes the winter solution potentially as far as the physical space. And then also figuring out things, you know, how to best run it and operate it. And then running it through the continuum of care, the, what I like about it is, I don't see this, I personally am a very fiscally conservative person, so I, with budgets, never think, I'm gonna work really, really hard to blow through it. It's the, if we could not spend all this, that'd be great to have a lot of that left to do a bunch of other things that, that you guys want to do. Um, so we tried to, I mean, if anything, we budgeted really high so that we don't say, hey, we want to hotel people for two nights, and then in a week say, oh, shoot, you know, it's all gone. But to say, we really think, almost worst case, this should be plenty of hotel dollars, but we're still gonna do the same analyzation of people going into hotels. So it's not just hay-free hotels for the first people that come and then burnt through as quick as we can. It's gonna be utilizing interfaith shelters, it's gonna be utilizing the warming shelter, and then those that, you know, either don't work for that, or it's, if, uh, Segway's at capacity for the night and we need to hotel for a few nights, we don't necessarily even need to say, you have thirty days in the hotel, maybe they only need three days until this space opens up in the shelter or things like that. So we, we would not look to try to just blow through it. Um, but by doing the facility upgrades, that's already setting Segway up to actually be a space that works long-term as well. So, so that's the hope behind it. And again, if anything, budgeting high with a buffer. And there's unique funds that have come the last couple of years with ARPA, and we're, we're trying to figure out how to not be surprised every winter and actually put a, an immediate thing in place that becomes the long-term thing for winter, and then also worry about things in July because that's really important as well, but, but less life-threatening. If that makes sense.
So this is just taking care of their night stay.
Right.
So they're still facing the daytime issue.
Yeah.
I think that was a great question. I, I really do, I think that was a great question. Um, uh, it, it, my, my request, if anyone is interested in making any motions um, toward this particular, um, proposal, is please make your motion, uh, uh, separate uh, on the proposals that are, are presented here. Because me personally, um, I'm, I'm okay, even though I do have questions about the, the formula of thirty percent of those funds being utilized just to coordinate and manage hotel stays because I think there's organizations that are out there that are currently managing and coordinating hotel stays right now. And I don't think that thirty percent of the funds should be used for, um, for staffing for that purpose. Um, that's just my opinion. Uh, but I, I ultimately would probably be a no vote on the warming center. Um, because it is only from nine PM to seven AM, and individuals still have to figure out what to do in thirty-degree daytime weather, um, on a generous day. You know, Michigan, uh, winter, uh, once we hit the, the actual cold point of winter, uh, what are individuals expected to do from seven AM to nine PM when they can go back to that warming center as a solution? Um, I think that if anything, the city should look to also be a partner. And when I say partner, I say on the financial end, on that type of solution as well. Not the sole contributor of a group solution that's been brought to us, um, with a, a financial proposal uh, that was not included in the presentation that was provided. I would have appreciated this to have been provided so we could have asked questions at that time as well. Uh, so I think that while it's a, a great contribution, um, I think that it doesn't provide a full solution for getting people out of the cold. It doesn't provide a full solution. Uh, so I would, I would appreciate whatever motions come about on this particular proposal, that they be taken separately.
So, um, I'm not making a motion. You need me to make a motion?
No, sir, you do whatever the woman in your heart is at this moment.
So, um, my understanding with the motel hotel stay is, um, is mainly for families? Sub hide back there. Oh, there you go up there, where you going?
Right here. A lot of times it would be, it would be, so we wouldn't necessarily always want to put a family into the warming center situation, or they might be too large to stay at the, the shelters that have room for a family of four and keep them together. So they may be more appropriate to go into a motel stay.
So what about the individuals? So like the individuals who was here tonight, would they qualify for hotel stay?
They could, mm-hmm.
So I guess who, who determines who qualifies?
Whoever, so what we've done in the past, so when we've had motel dollars at Community Action Agency, we have a diversion tool that we use to try and make sure they've utilized all their other options before we put them in the motel. Have they already attempted shelter? Have, if there's a warming center available, would they go there for the night? Do they have other options with family or friends? And then motailing as the last option, mostly because it's really expensive.
Yeah, I understand.
But we definitely, when we had motel dollars last year, we put in probably fifty-fifty, half were families and then half were singles that couldn't, didn't have anywhere else to go.
What condition is the booze center in?
Under construction.
Under con- under construction. Not livable. No heat.
I have a question, um, kind of directed at council more than anybody else. I mean, is this not what we've been asking for, for months? Right? I mean, we say, up here and say, okay, we have this bucket of money that we'd like to allocate to organizations that know what they're doing. And, I don't know, to scoff at it is, is kind of wild. That's my opinion.
Appreciate your opinion, but I'm not scoffing at it, I'm asking questions the same way as everybody else is allowed to do. Um, it's not, it's definitely not scoffing at it, uh, by any means. So I'll just clarify that right now because I feel like that was directed at me. Uh, I'm asking questions, uh, which everybody has been allowed to do. What I'm, I'm curious about is for a solution that we were told at one point, we have no obligation to do anything that's being brought to us for us to fund. That's, that's what I'm curious about. So my answer to your question, because I know you directed the question at all the council, would be, no, this isn't what we were asking for. We asked for this type of information under three solutions that we've been evaluating for the last three meetings. This was not part of any of those three solutions, except for the hotel stay. Which is why I'm most comfortable with evaluating what we should do there. Although I still have questions about the cost of the actual hotel stay management and coordination being twenty-seven something percent of the total cost of housing people, uh, for that timeframe. Uh, I also think that it's, what it's gonna, like, who gets to stay there isn't even really clear. Uh, the question was just asked with individuals who were just in this room that smelt of smoke. Would they be able to stay there? And the answer was, well, uh, maybe if they don't qualify for something different after we evaluate if they qualify for something different. So then I would have additional questions. Well, what does that process look like? How long does that process take? Is this a day process? Or come back and see us tomorrow in twenty-four hours when we've vetted you to find out if you qualify to stay here or not? So I just have questions, and I think that I would rather us ask, and this goes for any subject, I would rather us ask a million questions, uh, because the motto is to measure a hundred times and only cut once. That's why I never interrupt, even when I don't think questions should be asked. I'd never interrupt somebody from asking the questions that they need to ask to make a sound decision while they're sitting here. Because I think it's important for us to all have a full understanding.
So I'm sorry for qualifying it that way, I apologize for that. I do think this is one of many solutions that we should look towards. And I'd be, I would vote in favor of it as presented, along with everything else that we talked about, including pallet shelters and pursuing TA Wilson. And I think when we talk about eight to twelve pallet shelters along with this, I think we still have funds left over in that pot of money to pursue TA Wilson as a long-term solution.
Um, I'm gonna interject, I guess, since there's a little bit of quiet going on here. So I, I have good and bad things, I guess, with the COC proposal. Um, I do, I do understand where the mayor's coming from in terms of the, um, salary, so to speak, for the coordinator for the motel stay. Um, I don't, I, I understand it could be considered a full-time position. I would say probably like a thirty-hour, thirty hours a week. It doesn't say how many hours a week, it just says full-time. Um, I know that thirty hours a week is usually the minimum standard for full-time. And I would say maybe giving them twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour, that's definitely not gonna be twenty-two thousand dollars for ninety days. I, I do feel like that is a little bit overkill for ninety days of employment for coordinating hotels. Um, I, I, I definitely feel like that's a little bit of an overreach. I, I understand the salary for the warming center employees, especially for mental health professionals, but this salary for someone who's doing far less complicated work is only five thousand dollars less for ninety days. Um, in terms of the warming center, I do struggle with this a little bit because we are still gonna end up forcing these people out into the cold during the day. Um, I would almost rather give more money towards hotels because at least they can stay inside if they want to stay inside during the day, if they're at a motel. Um, I would ra- almost rather say, you know, we've got twenty-three households at the motel. I would maybe bump that up to thirty, thirty-five, um, in my opinion, just because then people can stay inside all day if they want to.
What was the question? What was that? You just said thirty, thirty-five, I didn't.
Thirty, like thirty, thirty or thirty-five, um, households, quote unquote. Like if we just increase the number of motel stays. Um, I, I can appreciate, you know, Segway wanting to, you know, work with the city on this. It's just, I struggle with forcing people outside in the cold.
Well, if we have consecutive nights, that may be going all wrong. They wouldn't have to leave the hotel, right?
No, not for those at the hotel.
So we're putting people up for thirty days, that means, I mean, they could stay all day? Would they stay all day? I know I asked that question because it was like, this is a night. But if they have, you know, if we're renting a hotel, if we're staying consecutive nights, you know, they come in and change the linens if you wanted, or whatever, you know? I mean, it's usually not thirty days, but, I mean, some people might be able to afford it. But, you know, what I'm saying is, if, if we're doing motels for thirty days. it, but you know, what I'm saying is, if, if we're doing motels for thirty days, but it says thirty nights, I mean, it, what, is it a, just a night from what is hotel check-in for? Out by eleven? What is it? What are we looking at?
Can I make a statement? I think we're micromanaging the continuum of care and the people who are the-
No, I just want to understand what, if this is just night and what hours does it cover?
But I think that the continuum of care, like they, from what I've had, the conversations I've had, I think that the people who specialize this know that whether somebody has to stay in a hotel for five nights because the weather's coming in and closing, you know, that it's, there's a big storm and it's gonna be, we're gonna be snowed in for a week, that they're gonna have to be there for a week. I, I think we're, we're, I feel like we're beating a dead horse. We have some good ideas from the continuum of care, from the mayor and the council people, and I am ready to make a motion and move forward, because we could debate this until midnight.
I, I agree. My, my only, my only additional comment would be, I think that we are evaluating a bid for proposal without putting a bid out to solicit for a proposal, is what I think that we're doing. And I don't think that's right, Laura. I think that if we are going to entertain a bid, which is what this is, for a proposal, that individuals who work in the space should have equal opportunity to bring and present a proposal on the solution that they want us to entertain. So make whatever motion you want to make, but I think that we need to ultimately keep that in mind. I personally think that we could take seven days and allow for additional proposals to come in if possible, so that we can consider what other options and what other options may look like, even though that means seven days of waiting. I really think that, 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 that I think is, is, is possible. If not, if council wants to make a decision tonight, what I would prefer to see is, like I said, break it up, because I'm a no on the entire proposal. I could possibly be a yes, but I still think twenty-seven percent is really high for, for, I mean, to, I think that's really high in the, in the temporary motel management and implementation. I think that's high. And, and again, I don't think we know without looking at what other options there could potentially be.
Well, I can tell you what my employee costs are, and I do not think that it's an easy job to try and find, how many hotel rooms? Twenty-three or whatever?
Thirty.
And they're not, if it were all in one hotel or motel, it would be a different ballgame, but they're not gonna find twenty-three rooms. And if they do find twenty-three rooms in one motel that will work with them, then they can adjust down on what they pay the individual. I think it's a budget, just like we budget for a raises, doesn't mean we necessarily give the raises to our staff.
Yes, it does. If we, if we approve the budget for a raise, it means we give it to them.
Maybe in the city, city world, but in private world, it doesn't necessarily work that way.
That's bad business if you promising a raise and don't give it to them.
Well, no, when I'm doing my budget, I don't necessarily tell my staff what I'm budgeting for. It's a whole different ballgame.
Once you approve it, because that's what we would be doing here, is approving it.
Well-
Because then, like you said, we're not gonna turn around and micromanage the funds once we've given them.
Right. I, we need to do something. We've seen the people in the audience, and, and if you don't like twenty-two thousand dollars for one full-time person on the motels, then pick a number, but, and if you, if you don't want to pay for the bathrooms or whatever the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars represents for the, the warming shelter, we need to do something. We're not gonna have TA Wilson in place, we're not gonna have pallets in place, the churches aren't stepping up because of whatever reasons, and we've been talking about this for two months. So it's, you know, I've heard people say that a million dollars isn't a whole lot when it comes to the city, city money, you're, right now, you're talking about two hundred thousand. I like the overall plan of doing this, doing TA Wilson with a purchase dollar, or, and then doing a rent to purchase until closing, and then put your pallets on the land at TA Wilson. I think that's a win-win-win all around, and if we do a rent with a purchase, a rent till we close, then we can use TA Wilson as a day place for people to go for staying warm. And we've, we've, now, the only issue that you're talking about is whether you pay someone twenty-two thousand dollars to shuttle people around and try and figure out motels, which I don't think is that easy of a job. I've seen people do it, my daughter had to do it for the Bright Walls, and that is not an easy job. And now, those are people who are, are capable of getting places, let alone people who are not capable, you know, so.
I get it, I get it, I do.
So my, my, if I am allowed to make, if you want them separate.
Please.
I was gonna say, I have a question before we get to that, too.
I, I'd like, I'd just like to point out, you know, that I, I think, Mr. Mayor, you made an awesome point, that we haven't solicited bids for this. I think we should. I would be very much in support of that, and I would also be very much in support of doing that on a quick turnaround and having a special meeting in seven days to discuss those bids. Because if we vote up and down on this now and it votes, and we vote it down, then we can't bring it back.
Is that a motion?
Someone who votes, like-
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move to informally solicit bids from organizations that work in this space and hold a special meeting at six-thirty PM, January twentieth, to discuss and-
January twentieth?
Oh, sorry, December twentieth, yeah.
It's like January.
Is there support?
I'll second.
It has been moved and supported discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess, I, I just said what I have to say. And I said it at the beginning, and I say it again, and I, I understand, you know, I think organizations should be more people, organization, financial supporting this, but, you know, we talk about what people doing, they do this every day. Every single day they do this. They deal with hotels, they deal with having people go in hotels or whatever, out on the streets, they deal with this every day. I have no issue with the temporary motel stay. I just think, like I said, that the money is there to have people who deal with this on a daily basis, and I would, I think our job is to have this pocket of money and get information from them and, and, and throw it out that way. I really do believe that's what we should do. What was the, what was the motion?
The motion was to informally solicit bids from organizations that work with the homeless population, and then meet in seven days to discuss those bids. And, and by say, I say informally because we really just need this. We need, we need an eight and a half by eleven white piece of paper from all these organizations that has a plan.
I think it's just only one organization, well, the continuum of care.
There's two here.
I know. You know, but, but this is not all the money that we have. We have seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So if we do two hundred thousand, oh, and eighty-five thousand, what a dollar for this, we still have money for, real? Residents in Action. So that's money I thought for them. I think what they're doing is outstanding job. I think they, personally, I think they're doing a more, more stuff that we concerned of, but just, this eighty-five thousand dollars is not gonna break the bank. We have seven hundred and twenty thousand. So if we go along with that, instead of coming back for, then that give us, we come back and we look at that. But talking about doing bids, it says, I know, I know we got anything over fifty thousand, we supposed to bid on it. I know anything over fifty thousand, we supposed to bid on it, and I get that. But, but we knew it was gonna cost something when we started going down this road, so it is a cost there. So I don't know, I'm-
I agree with Freddie.
I'm gonna say no. My, my, my vote is no for the bids.
I agree with Freddie.
Okay, let's just do one round. I'll start with council member Gunn.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm kind of listening to what Freddie's saying, so is it possible that we do motel stays, like that portion of it, and then ask for bids for, for something different? Like, could it be warming center? Could it be a combination of other solutions?
Is that question directed to me?
Everybody, anybody in the council?
So, so I'm of the opinion, even, even more so now, with the comment that anything over fifty thousand dollars, we are, by our own rules and regulations, supposed to bid out, that we need to bid this out. If anything, I would be absolutely okay with a, a smaller allocation in finding a way to figure out for either staff or a close entity who says, I'll just manage the fund for the short term, meaning like the next seven days, and trying to figure out what that looks like. I don't know if that's something that council would be interested in, something of the proportion, less than fifty thousand dollars, that we could just say, hey, we need somebody to manage these funds for seven days while we continue to evaluate and get a bid on the next portion of this solution.
And for hotels, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just don't want to wait another seven days for something.
So I think we need to evaluate the proposal that's on the, the bid, the, the motion that's on the floor right now, which is to solicit for bids, meet in the next seven days, because that is the motion that's on the floor right now. Are there any other comments on that particular motion?
I'm gonna vote against it, because I think we need to do something now, and we have, there have been other times where we haven't gone out for bids in the city's history. And when you know that you've got to use a specific person to do something, or, or we've, I just, I, I mean, I think if, if we can give Tasha some money, because she deals with a different, different way, her organization, a different way of homelessness, I'm cool with that. She would have to come to us with a proposal, obviously, but the continuum of care are the people who deal with homelessness. We've been talking about it for two months. I don't know that we've talked about getting a bid on, you know, do we look at other buildings? Do we look at other things other than pallets? And, you know, do you, I mean, how far does it go? It's, you got people who are freezing, and, I mean, I, I get it and I appreciate it, but I think it's time to, for lack of a better phrase, shit or get off the pot.
Just an additional comment, I think that there's a way for us to do exactly that, but still wait the seven days. I think that if a secondary motion was made after this one was entertained, of a lesser amount than fifty thousand dollars, that it could be approved per the ordinances that we have in place, that we, we should be abiding by the ordinances that we have in place of if something is over fifty thousand dollars that we request for proposal. If it's under, then we don't have to, it can be approved. And I think that if we approve the seven-day wait, who knows if Tasha even is interested in submitting a proposal in general. But I'm saying for those who work in that space, they should all equally be provided an opportunity for us to evaluate a proposal for a bid. Are there any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Fine, fine. I, mo- most people who know me know that I'm a rule follower to, to almost a T, to the point of, it drives some people insane, and I, I'm in full, full agreement that we need to stick to our own rules. I, I can't, we can't be the people, we can't be the, the type of governmental entity that goes against what we say. When we, when we make a rule, we have to stick to our own rule. That's, that's what we do. However, I, I cannot, I don't know if I can live with myself if I know that we delay seven more days on something and someone might die out in the cold while we delay this yet again. I can't, we, we can't just keep pushing, pushing this back and back and back and keep pushing a vote on. So we need to at least see if we can get this to the fifty thousand, so, or, or something, get the, get the budget to work until we can have the special meeting, up the amount, and move forward. Because we can't, we can't just keep pushing this along and not have something done, because we're, we're doing a disservice to our community by keep, by postponing it.
Last, last round of comment from council.
Well, I had-
I'm sorry, Mr. Dancy has something, and then I'll come back to you.
Oh, no, you were, go ahead. Getting, okay, thank you, Mr. Dancy. I still, and I don't want any of the agencies that were here to think that I was my Newton, what you were doing. I was really looking to try to extend their stay where they didn't have to leave during the day, okay? That's why I asked what the night hours were for the motel, okay? Then I was comparing it to what I do when I go to a motel. If I stay multiple days, I don't have to leave. That was my, that was my reason for that question. The other is, the RFP, which is request for a proposal, that, that we should follow. I, I understand the frustration with that, but I think we need to follow the rule on that. But we may be able to temporarily set something up to have funds available. We don't know if these other groups even want to manage that for us, and then that would put it on who? Us, to do the managing of the hotels and getting their pay-in form and in and out, and what liability comes along with that? I don't know. But I think the RFP should be done, but we also maybe can allot a certain amount of money to be used to put people up immediately, but then we don't have a commitment from anybody to help us manage that, if we do.
You can do exactly what you've said, a hundred percent, and we should. Can I say that?
You know I was about to ask you.
We should one hundred percent bid this out. And when I brought this up three, two meetings ago now, that was my recommendation, put it out to bid. Number one, efficiencies. There are people out there who can achieve our goals at better efficiencies. Now, every organization is the same. Number two, ideas. They have different ideas and different ways of going about things, and the creativeness that people show demonstrates that we don't know everything, and that there's people, when you put, when you put resources in their hands, they can figure out how to stretch things. And then what you can also do, you can do exactly what the mayor said, you can make a smaller allocation, we're only talking about seven days. You allocated five thousand dollars. That is something that we, as city staff, can coordinate by reaching out to the service providers who are already putting up people in hotels and say, hey, we have some funds to help you out with the existing procedures in place that they have. We can do both, and we should do both, because we owe it to right now, and it's interceding seven days, and we owe it to getting the best value for these dollars for the, for the motel stays and driving down the cost and putting more into actually helping people than paying people.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions on the motion itself? Not comments, questions on the motion that is on the floor. Clerk, just for the record, can you restate the motion for us?
I was gonna say, restate it.
To informally solicit bids from organizations that work with the homeless and hold a special meeting December thirtieth, excuse me, December twentieth at six PM.
Okay, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Passes four to three? Okay. Okay, that brings us...
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we, um, allocate, I don't know.
Ten.
$10,000, um, for temporary motel stays. Not to exceed $10,000 over the next seven days.
Ten days, give some time for implementation, that three days after.
All right, ten days. And the money to be administered by someone that Jonathan Green determines, our city manager.
I'll support.
I'm looking at John, because I think that's probably where it's gonna end up at.
No, 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 no.
It's gonna end up at Cory.
John has way too much on his plate. I made a commitment to him. He's sitting out there, his name's Cory.
Cory.
Okay.
I would've said Cory, but I didn't want to...
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion?
So I just wanna clarify, the 10,000 would be administered by the city. And any NPO or any organization that is currently working with some type of process to use hotels can apply for these funds directly to the city to use for hotels. Is that correct?
Up to $10,000.
So it sounds like we might need to put some...
Structure.
Structure to it.
The, the structure I was thinking of is if they're already in, I would re-verify what service organization they're working with. If they're in the HMI system, what, where are they, where have they touched so far? Have they been in hotels? Is this someone who doesn't need an hotel? So that's kinda the direction I was thinking of us going. It'd take a little bit more coordination for us, but I think, given it's only 10 days, we could probably handle it.
Yeah. No, I just wanted, I just need to know how it was gonna happen.
That's what I'm...
What is that 10,000 gonna do? How's it gonna be implemented?
I would just add a, a small bit of context, that I think that it would be important for us to give first priority to those individuals who are identified as currently street homeless, because that is the reason that we are looking to make an immediate decision.
Yes. Can we use the policy that is typically used by the organizations that... I mean, Community Action Agency has a policy in place, right? Could we just use their policy as a guide?
I don't know what the policy is, so we could use it as a guide, but if it doesn't do what we're just talking about now, but getting people off the street and into a hotel, then I'm not gonna use it.
So then you're gonna administer the funds then.
One of the...
So the, the, the city will administer that 10K.
100%.
Right.
And, and so the, and the priority would be the currently unsheltered. And that they come and say, we want hotels, hotel nights, and you'll be implementing them. Okay, so there won't be a, a second step, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. One of the problems that I heard about the motels, and John, you guys can confirm or deny, is that people would try and kinda work the system to get those hotel rooms, because that was more fun than staying home and arguing with their spouse or whatever. So that's why I say the policy that's already put in place by organizations, using it as a guide, so that... Cause we're not the experts. I might remind us.
No, but the intent is clear. I know the intent is not, we're not trying to solve domestic issues. We're trying to take people out of tent city, trying to take people out of bushes, out of overpasses. Cars.
Is there, is there, is there any other questions on the motion that is on the table? Specific to understanding better what the motion is?
Did we add any clarifiers in there, like administered by the city manager? The unsheltered, those things?
Well, I don't think it would be administered by city manager.
Well, city, city staff.
I don't think you need to do anything like that. It's a city function.
You don't think so, okay.
The city function will figure out who's gonna do it, how they're gonna do it.
But would it help us to put in the unsheltered in that motion?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Yeah, I think we need to know the priority, the intent.
Okay.
The intent smells like campfire smoke.
Any other questions to clarify the motion itself? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay.
I have one other question that might move to motion. Is the, um, you had sleeping bags on here for $3,000. Is that something of urgent need because of the weather?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had added that for people that were uncomfortable staying at motel or at the warming center or shelter, that we would provide some kind of winter gear for them if they were gonna be outside. So that's what those are for. Those are actually like sleeping bags that you can wear as a jacket, and then they fold into a bag, so you could carry them if you weren't wearing them.
They're made in Jackson, aren't they?
No.
Mm-mm, but they're made in, I think it's Detroit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There's something that's made in Jackson, I can't remember what it was. Do, do we wanna add that as a separate motion?
To like purchase them and then... Guess you never know until you find out.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we purchase, or that we provide up to $3,000 available to purchase coats that turn into sleeping bags, whatever that third section says, to be administered by city staff.
I'll support it.
Okay, so motion and support, any discussion? What does, I guess, administrate about it, city staff? What does that mean? Just talk to me real quick. Just break it down to me.
I, I mean, I didn't make the motion, so I can't say it.
It means Cory has got more on his job description.
I think that, in my opinion, I think what that would look like is this city purchasing them and then being able to allocate them based on need, whether it be an organization or an individual.
A drop-in.
At least that's, that would be my perspective on it. I don't, that's, is that...
Yeah, however it works, just to get them, people warm. And since we didn't have an organization to give it to.
Any other questions to clarify the motion?
No.
Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay. I think that will conclude our discussion on item number 12 until the next, or sorry, item E until the next seven days. Which will bring us to item number 12.
Can we ask for an update at least at the next special meeting on the TA Wilson conversation?
Of course.
Okay.
I'm adding that as part of your comment.
Oh, that's fine, perfect. Other than happy holidays, um, and I'm hungry, cause there's nothing to eat out there. But, uh, yeah, if we could get an update on, on those, that, that would be a beautiful thing. Happy holidays.
The other east side. All right, wait, you done?
Done, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
I'm rattling now.
Uh, the other east side. East side? Oh, no, no, the other east side. That's the other, that's the other east side.
Step aside, east side.
Stop like that, step aside.
I was born and raised on the east side, okay? Can you say the same thing? I don't think so. I have no other comments. I appreciate all the conversation. It's been a hard conversation to have, and I think there's a lot of strong feelings because we really wanna do something. And I think that's where this is all coming from.
Councilmember Karen.
What is she, she's the middle.
I, I'm, I'm central, central city or whatever, I don't know what you wanna call me. Uh, I do, I do really appreciate everything that was presented today, from COC, from RIA, even though we didn't completely agree with everything that was on the sheet that we got from COC. I don't, I don't want that to take away from the fact that it, it had all the best intentions, and I think that it was a very well-thought-out proposal. I just think that, given the way that things are structured within our own rules, that we have to do the RFP, just in order to do what we say we do, versus just make an exception. Cause as soon as you make an exception for one person, you have to make an exception for somebody else. So, so I, I do really appreciate all the work that you put into it, even though we didn't vote on everything today. Other than that, I'm, I'm glad we're at least getting the ball rolling on this and putting our money where our mouth is. I, I hope that Davida will be happy, and, and TJ and everybody else will at least be happy that we're finally like getting started getting this solution. I don't wanna say fixed, cause I don't know if it'll ever be fixed, but at least we're working on it. We're actually saying, we're doing, we're doing what we're gonna say we're gonna do. So I at least wanna, I'm happy for that. And other than that, yeah, happy, happy holidays to everybody, whatever holidays you celebrate. Let them be happy.
Thank, the origa, uh, the originator. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank Resident in Action, Steve, Continuum Care for that, the presentation that they gave. Thank council, thanks for, those who stayed, being patient. It's a lot, and I knew it was gonna be a long night tonight. And I thank for the patience that you had to stay here with us. And I know we be back in seven days. So, you know, I'm just thinking, we be back someday. So we vote on this, it's gotta be a second reading, I'm assuming. Then we gotta do another special meeting. Then we come back, then, you know, if it passed, we got 30 days before we can go into action. So I just, but I'm, you know? Up or down? Okay, forgive me, I'm just tripping it. But then again, just thank you, thank everyone for coming out, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Nah, you won't see me.
Yes.
I'm going on vacation. We'll see you in seven days. Councilmember Big Will.
Everybody keeps saying seven days, if we wait another hour and a half, it'll be six. I, uh, I'm glad to see us move forward on this. And I'm really glad to see the COC and the IRA here, um, speaking with us and then coming to the table. I mean, if the last two months don't hi, and it's said over and over again, but if the last two months don't highlight how we are not built for this, I don't know what does. So thank you for stepping forward, we do need your help, and we're looking forward to more bids like this in seven days, so, thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say much appreciation to the Continuum of Care, RIA, and to all of you for, you know, we've had a couple months of, you know, dialogue, conversation around the homelessness. So just know that all of that is appreciated. I've learned more, and I'm still learning about what's, what's going on around the area. Not that I'm totally ignorant to it, but there were a few sparks that touched me tonight with information being provided by those agencies. I was gonna say happy holidays. I guess I will say happy holidays to everyone, even though we will, we'll be together again. And it is perfect timing, you guys. 21st would've been bad for me, so, uh, we'll see you next week.
My first comment would be for staff to please provide us a phone number of who to contact, because I'm sure that the phone calls will probably not start tomorrow, but, um, in the next few minutes to find out where do we go to take advantage of the resources that have just been, been allocated through the last motion. So that would be a question, first and foremost, is who, what is gonna be the, the who to contact number for that?
It's gonna be Cory Mays, Cory, can you give out your phone number directly on the ticket, 705-HARKEY?
768-6461. I will welcome your calls first hand.
Not tonight, at, at 6:00 AM?
Second request, which I'm sure he is already on it, is can staff direct, um, the most honorable Aaron to put something on our social media to say that if people know of individuals who are in need over the next seven to 10 days, and where to contact, who to contact. That would be my second. The, the third thing I would say is, may I take this, this particular subject of homelessness very personal? I've said it several times up here, that I've experienced not only what it's like to be homeless, but literally what it's like to be homeless during this particular time of year. Whereas the hardest time of year, as is already for individuals in depression and the, the burden of what the holidays bring. So, uh, this is something that I think that everybody up here cares about. So I think that was an ill statement that was made, that we don't care. I don't think that's accurate. I think that everybody up here, everybody in the room, I think, cares. It's not always going to be an immediate or a fast answer or a fast solution that we derive it. But I think that if it was something that we didn't care about, it would have simply just continued to not be a conversation. I also wanna say that if there is ever a question about where I stand on something, what I think about something, what my opinion on something is, my phone number is very accessible. If you look up the mayor of the city of Jackson, the phone number does not ring upstairs to the 14th floor. It rings to this cell phone right here. If you don't have access to the internet, it is 517-914-2706. There shouldn't be a time where people are calling my family members to find out what I think about a subject. I'm very easily accessible and always open and available to talk about important subjects. That would be all of my comments, except for thank you to, to council for such in-depth conversation about this and everybody doing their own homework, and the Continuum of Care, and RIA for their comments, for their presentations. And I don't think there's a bad solution on the table. I think that it just requires us to do our due diligence. And like Councilmember Karen said, to follow the, the rules that we set and expect everyone else to follow. We can't, we can't play to do what I say, not do what I do, gang. Mr. City Manager. No, no, come on, man.
I make a motion to, uh, uh, adjourn. West side, west side.
Is there, is there support? Right, all in favor?